Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the planning board meeting of September ninth. This is our first time test driving it in this room. I think, Deb, do you mind shutting that door? No, thank you. An important announcement to make. At nine o'clock, the rest of the library closes. And we'll have access to the restrooms that are outside this door. But if we go out of those doors, we will cause a great ruckus and a stern will be in the police beat. So we're gonna, after nine o'clock, we're gonna go out that door, hopefully. The library staff is gonna close those doors and it's gonna put a sign on it. And we'll see if we can all avoid the police beat this week. Us and the squirrels. So just, I want to give everybody a little update. There are several hearings that have been advertised that are not gonna have any action tonight. Number three on our agenda is the continued public hearings for Seventy-Six Main Street. There's a request to withdraw. We will take action on that, but there won't be any conversation on that. The number four, local action unit application discussion and recommendation to the select board for the Chamberlain-Weyland subdivision. There is no action needed tonight. There'll be no discussion on that, so if you're here for that. The continued public hearing for Maspinock Woods is gonna be continued. And just so whoever is here, if they're here for that, do we know when we're gonna continue that one? Because we can take the action. Shall we just pick up?
I think it will be up to the board. I don't think they asked for a specific date.
So what is the agenda like next time?
I would not vote for next time, because I don't think they're, they're contemplating withdrawing or making changes, so I don't think they're gonna be, if they're not ready for this week, I doubt they'll be ready for next time.
So what's our first meeting in October?
The seventh.
Seventh? So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Maspinock Woods, October seventh.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, the other new public hearing for Elmwood Farms, three off of Adams Street, Myrtle Avenue, and Fitch Avenue, amendment to the dependent subdivision plan. The applicant is Abbott Realty Trust. They have requested a continuance to, for six weeks, so I'll entertain a motion to continue that public hearing to October twenty-eighth. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick clarification for everybody. That's, that's the government off of Blueberry Lane.
It is the government off of Blueberry.
None of those roads exist on Google Maps.
Yes, thank you. Off Blueberry. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So that means if you're here for the Blueberry Road, Lane, whatever, it is not, there's gonna be no testimony, nothing heard tonight. October twenty-eighth is when they'll be back. So you're welcome to stay. But nothing will happen tonight. The first that we'll discuss it is on the twenty-eighth.
Will there be another notice about that?
There will be, so, the process is, the butters are noticed once, and then the reason we pick particular dates when we continue is we consider that, we, that is your public notice. So at this meeting, we pick a date certain when they will be, when it will come up again. They may continue again, but we will discuss it again, at least to continue it on the twenty-eighth, and then, but that's the date certain. So no more mailings will go out about it. It will be the twenty-eighth.
Okay, at the same time, in the same place?
Maybe in the same place. We'll see how these next few meetings work out.
Yeah, so that's an excellent question, actually.
You just have to check the agenda for the planning board meeting.
The location will be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Where, so when I looked up the Hoppington site, I couldn't find this, the information. It looked like it was on a different site than the Hoppington town site?
It should, the agenda was posted.
If you go to the main page, down at the bottom, even on the front page of hoppingtonma.gov, there's a calendar. And if you click on the appointment for the planning board, all this information is linked to that.
Okay, I'll look it up again.
But we, we make a concerted effort to make sure that the public is, can follow these meetings. That's, that's one of the most important pieces of the process. So if you have trouble finding that information for October twenty-eighth, definitely reach out to John by email or by phone, and he will get back to you immediately and let you know.
Also, shameless plug, but E-HOP does a really nice job of
E-HOP does a really nice job.
Sharing our agendas and schedules as well.
Yeah, absolutely. But we are, we are obligated by law to make sure you're noticed appropriately, so the website has to have that information, or we haven't done our job.
In Town Hall, there's also physical posting of every agenda. If you go to the Town Clerk's office, they'll have a copy of it that they can give you, or you can find it on the book.
Okay. All right. So for everybody else, just to give you a little bit of a heads up, we're gonna do our administrative items first. I had a feeling we were gonna miss a lot, so. We're gonna do our administrative items first. Our first continued public hearing that we're gonna hear is Whisper Way. We are then going to hear the public hearing on Ninety-seven to Ninety-nine South Street. We are then gonna take the new public hearing for Two Twenty-three Pond Street. And then we're going to take the new public hearing for Fifty-seven Hayden Row. And then fifth, we're gonna take the continued public hearing and new public hearing that have to do with the EverSource Energy folks. So just so you know the order of the, of the night as well. All right. John, you wanna take us a walk as to the, yes?
What about the ten more, Fifty-seven Hayden Row?
That was gonna be fourth. Yeah. John, do you want me to walk through the administrative items, or do you wanna walk through them?
Uh, I'll have you walk through them.
Okay, go right ahead.
If you take one of these and pass them down, Mary, you're not one of the candidates for a planning board vacancy, has submitted her resume, just for your information. So this is just a discussion item. If there is any discussion that anyone wants to have, the joint meeting between the planning board and the select board is tomorrow at seven-twenty. And it's going to be in room two fifteen, two sixteen, which is our old meeting room, the select board meeting room. And if there's any questions, happy to take them. I think right now we have four candidates.
As far as I know, we have four candidates as well, and we appreciate all four people stepping forward from their hat in the room.
And one thing to note, as I've been informed and advised from the Town Clerk, is that we can get more candidates right up until the meeting time, so.
Fascinating.
There could be some last-minute additions, but.
Stay tuned. Might be a little rodeo action, okay. The other question I wanted to know, do you know if the Legacy Farms North bus stop issue, what time it is on the select board agenda, just for members who might wanna send?
I can look. It should have, should have the agenda somewhere.
Okay, I'll let you look.
I'll take a look.
Okay. So I'll plow down. The zoning advisory committee appointment, we have one more appointment, Mary, is that right?
Yes, we have one open.
All right, and we have an applicant. Is Sundar here? It's all right, he's not. Yeah. So we have one more position, and we have an applicant for the zoning advisory committee, so I would entertain a motion to appoint him.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? The only discussion I wanna say is I really appreciate that Sundar found a spot to participate, because, you know, we couldn't appoint him someplace else, and this is an awesome spot for him, and we needed, we needed that on his act, so I appreciate that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Did we find it or no? It's all right, you didn't. It's all right, you can, why don't you just, you can continue. I'll look at that tomorrow.
I was gonna mention, I think it's a full agenda for the select when they have the Greyhound fans hearing as well, so.
They should do.
Yeah, so whatever time Legacy Farms is scheduled for, it might not really be at that time.
Is it before?
So unfortunate, I can't look right now.
Don't worry about it.
I don't have the internet.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
It's not letting me search my email.
So let's go to the planning board rep for community preservation committee.
Just for the reference to help, John, it's library guest, and it's no password.
Connected, it just says there's no internet for some reason. Dave was able to connect, I don't know why my computer can't connect.
We're hogging it all up, though.
All right, there's no worries. Okay. So Gary has volunteered to continue on the CPC, so I will entertain a motion to enthusiastically support that.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Is somebody coming to talk to us about Legacy Farms North bus stop?
No, but I can give an update.
Perfect.
So we had a site visit with two members of the school, municipal inspections, myself and Elaine, Chief Lee.
Yeah.
And a representative from Legacy Farms. So Eighty-three North, or Eighty-three East Main, the corner of Legacy Farms North.
Yeah.
Dilapidated house. There's a kind of a open area. They're gonna gravel that and allow for parents to come down and park there. And then the bus is going to stop on Legacy Farms North just before that intersection. There's a turn lane, so they're gonna, they're gonna stop in that right-hand turn lane and allow kids to get on.
Hold on. So entering Legacy Farms North from East Main.
Leaving Legacy Farms North, getting onto East Main.
Thank you.
Coming down Legacy Farms North.
Coming down Legacy Farms North.
Yeah, the parents can get onto East Main, and the entrance is gonna be improved on East Main, and they're gonna kinda do a loop and then park. You know where that, that rock wall is? That's basically where the bus stop is gonna be.
Okay.
And they're gonna improve the access by that retention pond and the rock wall. They might do fencing or some kind of a walkway, and kids are gonna get on the bus there, so they'll have an always stop on Legacy Farms North.
Yeah.
There's a sidewalk that continues all the way down, so children can walk, can walk all the way down. And there's a crosswalk that crosses Legacy Farms North.
At the, at the?
At the intersection with East Main.
With Franklin?
No, farther, all the way down, right by the, right by where the bus stop is.
Old Peach Street. So if I'm walking down that hill from Legacy Farms North, I get to Franklin, I have to cross Franklin?
Nope, you continue going down. Uh, so it depends on what side. Yes, you have to cross Franklin, yes.
And that's where the sidewalk is?
Yep.
On the far side?
On the western nursery side.
Okay. Sidewalk down to East Main?
Yep, and then there's a crosswalk.
Crosswalk.
I believe. And they're going to continue the sidewalk along East Main towards the center of town, eventually.
Yes, yes, yeah. So parents are gonna be pulling from East Main. There is, the wa, actually, the, the children are gonna enter the bus, the bus is gonna stop on Legacy Farms North, so they're gonna come across the gravel parking lot this way?
So, this, so if you're familiar with the site, it kind of, right next to the house, it's raised a little bit.
Yeah.
And then it slopes down. They're gonna make the slope-down part the gravel parking lot.
Yeah.
So it's gonna go right up to, close to that tree. So they're, I mean, they can walk across the gravel parking lot a little bit, but it's really gonna be that grassy area that they walk across.
To the chair. So they're going to be plowing that as well?
Yes, yes.
And it's going to be gravel and crush down?
I don't know. I don't know the details of that.
It would be kind of interesting to find out, because one would last a little bit longer and perhaps not get money.
Will they be coming back to us for a site plan review?
So, since this is a temporary bus stop and not a parking lot, it's been determined that it doesn't need planning board approval.
It's been determined by who?
People higher than me.
I gotcha.
And has the historical commission been notified, since they've been watching that house?
I don't know. We were just pulled into this as kind of an informational, we're not really part of the process. It's really the school committee and Legacy Farms that is doing this. They were presenting to everyone else.
Well, they didn't present to everyone else, because they didn't present here.
They presented to everyone else on the site.
Okay, tell me again, who was there?
It was Carol, I don't know her name.
Yeah.
And then, I don't remember the other woman's name who was.
From the school.
From the school. Police chief, Chuck Cadlec, the director of municipal inspections, Elaine, me, and then a representative from Legacy Farms, Eric.
To the chair, to me, it's kind of important if we find out whether it's going to be free from mud and it's going to get plowed appropriately. Is there any kind of letter or note that we can get back from them without, you know, confirming how it's gonna be done?
Yeah, the planning board can submit a letter asking these questions and request their response.
Okay. Thank you.
I can prepare a letter like that if everyone wants to just email me individually their comments, and I can put that together and send it to them.
So I would request the historical commission be copied on that, because that home is supposed to be.
On that, on that letter.
The home is supposed to be preserved as part of the host community agreement, so they should, any changes to that law could potentially affect the structure. They should be, they should at least be notified. Maybe they don't have any review.
Can I ask one more question? What, what was the discussion about the longevity of this solution?
It was kind of just discussed as the solution for now. I don't believe there was any discussion about how long they intend this to last for, or what the, the thing that would change the situation would be. It's kind of, the school decided that it was the best situation that they could think of right now with partnership with Legacy Farms.
And do you know how, if the parents were included in that conversation?
So the school is reaching out to the parents individually. They have some system where they can reach out to the parents of Legacy Farms, and they said they're gonna do a straw poll. Basically, the majority wins. If the parents approve of this, then they're gonna do it. If the majority of the parents don't approve, then they're gonna try and figure something else out.
Okay. And what's the timing?
That I couldn't nail down. I'd ask about three times.
Well, excellent.
Yeah. They said, as soon as we get all the approvals that are needed.
What group that decided they don't need any approvals?
The approvals are the approvals from the parents, and essentially, school committee, if there's anything that needs to be done on their behalf.
I do have reps from the school committee, would you, do you mind coming forward? Yeah, no. Four-one-one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, just a quick response to the report that John gave, because.
Should you say your name?
Sure, John Della, Emily is the town school committee.
Thank you.
So, one of the sort of tricky things is that it's really not in our hands. It's out of our hands as far as the district and the schools are concerned, because the master of law dictates where the buses can go. It's not like we don't feel like going into Legacy Farms, it's master of law that dictates. It's chapter sixty-eight, master of law, chapter sixty-eight, section, I can't remember what.
It just doesn't matter.
I brought, so just, just to reinforce the point, it's not because we don't want to, it's because we can't. And the bus company cannot be compelled to break the law either. So we aren't really spearheading the effort, because it's out of our hands. We wanna help out the community and support and sort of be however we can, but we can't, there's nothing that the school committee can do specifically to alleviate the situation until the road is a public road. And then the transportation ramps can be redistricted and, or re.
Added.
However it is, yeah, exactly. And then, and then, we can, we can make something happen, but until that happens, we're there in a support role, we're not really there in any other capacity. You know, Carol is there because she wants to help out the families and the kids, and she knows support and solidarity, but other than that, we can't do anything else. It really falls on the, into Roy's hands, into the developer's hands, and to the town's hands if they wanna come up with a solution.
So, not to put too fine a point on it, the school committee is part of this one Hoppington, but I also understand that the select board is busily trying to not address it as well, because it's your problem, is what I've been told, and I can pull up that email, but I'll skip that. So, you know, congratulations to the planning board for at least bringing it to the table and making people talk about it, because nobody wants it to be their problem. And we have upwards of a hundred and twenty kids.
Right.
Who are not in a safe situation up there. So I would submit that it's all of our problem to fix this.
It is, it is, and I think that the, the number of residents, and I certainly won't speak for them, but they did come to the meeting, our meeting, the other night, when the same report was given at our meeting. And they're not particularly enthused about this solution either.
Who, I'm sorry, the residents up there are not particularly enthused about this solution?
That was the response that we received. I can't speak for them. That was the response, we received that.
What night, what night was the meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday, last Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And quite a few folks, I, I don't know the number, but I wanna say at least ten people showed up, and like, had one of those person come up and speak in response to the issue, so, you know, it is, it's a problem. It's a big problem. There's lots of kids, it ain't a safe place to get on the bus, but we can't compel the buses to go down the road, so what do we do? You know, and it's like, it was the situation right now.
So has the school committee voted on this as a possible solution?
We cannot vote on it, because we hadn't, the school bus will just stop on a public road. It's not like it needs a school committee vote.
So I get that. On this temporary solution to have a bus stop this way.
It was a report given to us, but there was no vote denied.
So I thought we just heard that the school committee insisted that, that this was the solution.
So the two representatives that we spoke to.
Yeah.
Were working with Legacy Farms, and, excuse me if I got this mistaken. It was the two groups presenting to the rest of us as if it was one solution that was worked out between them.
Okay.
And we're just hearing about it.
Okay.
So when I asked about what approvals are needed, I was told it was the school committee needs to, they, they didn't say what approvals were needed, but it says the school committee needs to reach out to the parents and make the decision about whether they're moving forward with this. If that's not how it was, and if it's purely Legacy Farms, then it's all in Roy's hands, but that's, that's.
To the chair.
Yes.
I have a statement. I think that this is a pretty good short-term resolution, if we can get there. Historically, it is the old Peach Street. I'm not sure how much of a full turnaround they can accomplish there, but it sounds much safer to me than the other situation with the corner of Franklin. So you've been there?
Yeah, 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 I've been there, and it is, it's busy. I completely understand where the folks ended up there.
To the chair, can I ask the two people who have been there, and representing the town, representing us, your opinion?
To be fair, I wasn't there representing, I went to go check it out on my own.
Okay. Well, you represent the town and the school committee. And you're an active person in this, in a way.
In a way.
More than I have been, which I thank you for. What are your opinions? Is it a relatively good idea, or better than what we have?
Go ahead.
Personally, I would say it's better than what is currently in place. The area is large enough that it can easily fit, what I was told was the max of ten cars at any time. It can fit more than ten, but they said that it's not many, they've seen it the most. Plenty of room to turn around if it's the area that they're talking about. And if they plow it and maintain it, it should be something that's reasonably accessible at all times. They said they're gonna improve the entrance from East Main. The concerns that we had were that it really should be, since there's a double yellow-strike line on East Main there, it really should only be a right turn out of there, but it's likely not gonna be that in practice, because the police aren't gonna be able to enforce that. So, and if you went right to get back to Legacy Farms, you'd have to go all the way to Roy's end and then all the way around. So apparently, it's gonna be, probably gonna get this mixed up, I think they said more of an issue in the afternoon than in the morning, or maybe it's gonna be more of an issue in the morning than the afternoon, but one of them, they said they're not concerned about, it's the other one.
Morning.
So I don't know if there's gonna be some kind of mitigation put in place to alleviate those concerns, but they, it didn't seem like too many people were concerned, about ten cars trying to access East Main from that parking lot at one time.
To the chair.
Hold on, hold on. Yes.
I just have an observation and a question, because it, so I understand the school board didn't wanna own this, and the select board didn't wanna own it. The planning board did want to do something about it, and I'm curious, John, was any effort made to involve the planning board or any representation of the planning board in this discussion and brainstorm, making up the current solution that's been proposed?
There was some back and forth via email, not involving the planning board, but we were copied on some of the emails, but there was a lot of discussion behind the scenes that we weren't privy to. We were invited to see the site and hear the presentation, but coming up with the idea, we weren't involved. I wasn't involved.
So, I would like to, Mary.
Okay, I have a question, and this is regarding the, the opportunity, if any, to change bus routes mid-year. If, this is just total theoretical, if during the school year, we were able to get an acceptance of the road through lots of different hoops, would the school committee be able to work with the, the bus company to change the bus routes? Or would it have to wait until following school year?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
But I, I, I believe that if the road is set public, then we would be able to work with the bus company, but I don't know that that's absolutely true. As long as it's a public road, I think we can make adjustments to the transportation if it's deemed necessary, but we can't.
Make adjustments in the past.
Okay. And then, just comment in general to the rest of the board, is that, again, the school year has started. There has to be a short-term solution as well as our medium or long-term solution, and I think that this is a decent short-term solution, however it came about. And I do believe, personally, I believe that we need to continue to push the longer-term solution, and perhaps not for a special town meeting, but definitely for our next annual town meeting, and get this solved on a permanent basis by then.
I find myself agreeing with you pretty well, Mary, thank you. Do you want?
Just one comment, I was wondering why they wouldn't have the turnoff of the, of Legacy Farms parking lot instead of going onto a busy road, and then they come back and go against traffic. It seems kind of funky.
There's a retention pond right there.
Oh, there is?
A retention pond.
A retention pond.
Anybody?
I have a question from our school committee.
What's that?
I'm not sure if I've heard the answer, but do you think this is a good short-term solution?
Well, I think it's the best that we can come up with right now, right, but I don't.
Not to put you on the spot, but in general.
No, I mean, that's the thing, this has been going on for a really long time, this isn't something new. And lots of folks way smarter than me have been looking for solutions and have come up with nothing.
I know that that's true, Jen.
You're going that as well. And I think that in terms of ownership, to Gary's point, you know, it's, it's not a function, I mean, the school has been aware of us and has looked for solutions for the last couple of years, but when your hands are tied by laws, your hands are tied by laws, we can't spend $200,000 on one bus, you know, a private bus. I don't think the town's gonna, that's not gonna fly, the town, to spend, you know, four times as much on one private bus. There, that was an option that we looked into, but it's about four times as much as a regular school bus, a private bus. So we've been looking for things, but there's not, two years, and no viable solutions, so I feel like this is the best that, for now, we can come up with that's gonna solve as many of the problems as we can. But to Mary's point, you know, we need a long-term solution, and I don't know what the timeline is for approving these roads as public ways, but that really is when we can have a long-term that really is when we can have a long-term solution, as soon as those roads are approved as public ways.
Deb, I'm coming to you. Amy, did you have anything?
I generally agree with Mary, that I think this is better than what they have now, but it's not a permanent solution.
Not ideal, but the best thing that we have.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the, the access, as David was, onto a major road. That road can be extremely busy, both in the morning. The morning gets going in the opposite direction, so they're going to have to hang a, hang a left pretty darn quickly because people come down that road relatively with high speed. I just haven't had an opportunity to look at if there's space between the stone wall and the retention pond, I just pulled it up on the map. And, but I did drive by and I saw the sign and I knew exactly what it was for without even hearing this, this information. And I thought it was a good solution because it is a big enough area. My, my concern is that it's risky. And I would, I, I would hope that we could take a little bit of a closer look.
So Jen, I, our frustration is not directed at you. We understand that we're all in this together. I have a question, did Chief Lee sign off on those kids walking across Franklin and then back across Legacy Farms North?
Was he at the meeting you went to?
And he thought that was a great idea? Did he say?
He didn't say it, I don't remember him saying specifically about the crosswalk, but he was there, we had a discussion about it.
And how about the cars pulling in and coming out on that street in, in great numbers?
So that's what we talked about, so it's, it doesn't seem like it's that many. I understand ten cars can be a lot at a certain point in time, but I was assured it was ten cars max going to that party lot at any one time.
By who?
By, I think it was Eric, I can't think that was his name, it represented from Legacy Farms, who has looked at the Franklin situation. So we did talk about putting signs up saying right turn only, but Chief Lee said he doesn't really see that being enforced, so it's going to be tough to actually make that happen. The next item on our agenda may help with that.
Do we have somebody to speak to that?
That's also me.
You know what, John, welcome to Hockins, and welcome to the ways of this world.
But I don't want to end.
Hold that thought.
I don't want to end this conversation with that. Should we move to that scene?
We're just going to set a little fire on it even. Mina, welcome.
I just want to thank the planning board for having taken this up first and foremost. I think it's a very important issue, it involves kids, and there is a huge risk involved with the way things are set up right now, and the school committee completely understands it. So I think Gary, you were trying to make a point about, you know, the ownership. As Jen said, there are certain limitations with which we are working, but I don't think we are walking away from it, we're looking to partner. What I would like to see happen is a joint meeting perhaps with the planning board, with the select board, with the school committee, and possibly the parents, because I don't think that it's fair that we come up with these solutions and, you know, later find out, you go through all this process, so like you've spent a lot of time, Dr. Kavanaugh and Susan Rothenberg, you know, take the time out, go through all those sessions, and then any parents are saying, this is not a viable solution for us, I think it's important to have that open dialogue. Of course, there's only so much money to go, given the challenges that we have in our town with the growth and the financial constraints that we have, so we need to be mindful and we need to request that of the parents to let their happiness and give it to. So that's my hope, and I think representatives from the school committee are willing to join such a meeting, but knowing that we have such limitations on our end. They're happy to support, Dr. Kavanaugh has already expressed that she's happy to do a survey with the parents, Keweenaw Farms, so to the extent that the school committee and the school administration can support, we look very, very to it.
It is fair. I actually really appreciate that approach, Mina, and it's what was rattling around in my head as well. I'm a little, you know, right now I'm not thinking with my planning board hat. I'm thinking about myself as a mom with all my kids trucking down there. I'm not sure I picture it. I, I actually, I actually support it as a short-term solution, but I really think that circumventing the review process is a big mistake. And certainly that the parents weren't there to weigh in on it is affrontive, I'm not blaming you guys, I'm just saying that absolutely parents should have been involved in that conversation, and it feels to me like some people are practicing avoidance in this process. And we need to get everybody together and get a solution that we can all feel is safe and tenable, at least for this school year as we work for a more permanent solution. So I really appreciate the suggestion of the meeting, I don't know how other board members are feeling, but circumventing the site plan, you know, this, this, the review process is, is not an option I think is even supportable.
Even if it's a temporary measure, there's other factors of the group, but I totally agree with Mary.
The only other point that I wanted to make, Mary, you asked a question about being able to change stops. I think we had brought that up at the school committee meeting, the characters discussed. Of course, within the purview of what is a public road, obviously the buses would fly there, but that's not something we want to change a couple of times a day here. Right, so if there is the solution, temporary solution we choose, we should try and stick to it for the rest of the year.
Okay, that's the preference.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree at all, because it's a, if there's a, if there's a supportable solution, we should drive with it for this school year at least. And if it, if it worked for longer, that's okay too, right? If it was a solution that worked for longer, that would be great. I'm wondering how it is that we didn't get invited to that meeting?
To what meeting? The site visit? It was scheduled via email, I don't know.
Certainly, it was well-known that I had a vested interest in that.
The town manager asked Elaine to schedule it.
I'll be speaking to him directly, thank you.
I don't know who they told to.
Perfect. Okay, so go ahead with the light.
Sure.
Ten feet from where we're talking about, right?
So I fielded several.
Unless you, unless you have opinions on the light.
Well, I'll be back.
Okay.
So I fielded several phone calls recently about the traffic light that's at that intersection, or the lack of a traffic light that's at that intersection, and looked back at the decision for Legacy Farms. And in the decision, there's a condition that states if a traffic light is determined to be necessary, which I believe Beta has determined it to be necessary, Legacy Farms as an organization has acquiesced to. They are to install the traffic light within six months of that determination. And if they are unable to do it in six months, they can come before the board to request another six-month extension. So we've received 75% drawings last week. We're not going to be able to internally meet on them because John Westerling is out of town for this week, so we're going to try and meet early next week to discuss and provide comments back to BHB so that they can move forward or make amendments as needed. But seeing as how I've been here now for five months, I don't believe that this was brought before the board a month before I got here. I think that they may need to get an extension from the planning board based on that decision. So I can reach out to Roy and see if he can submit a letter to request that. But I have, like I said, I fielded calls from residents of Legacy Farms North and South asking when this light is going to go in, asking for a timeline. So I think I can say, hopefully within six months, if the planning board agrees to grant that extension, but we haven't really discussed the plans yet, so I don't know what the process is to get that installed and what you need to do at the state level, so I'm not super clear that it will be six months, but just want to get your guys' feedback on that. And I think tying this to the recent, the previous item, once there's a stoplight there, I think getting onto Main Street might be a little bit easier during the red lights. So maybe it won't be an issue to park and access Main Street at that site as it is now, but I don't know how much of a solution it's going to be.
Remind me again, John, who was at the meeting out there for about the bus stop?
Two school.
Yeah, I got them.
Chief Lee.
Chief Lee.
Elaine, myself.
The town manager who called this meeting didn't bother to go?
I don't know.
Was he there?
I don't, he wasn't there, I don't know if he sent Elaine as his representative or if he was otherwise occupied. And Chuck Cadlec, the director of municipal inspections. That was it, John, oh, and Dave Deltorio, facilities manager. John Westerling was supposed to be there, but I think he got held up with something else.
All right, well, we're exhausted.
To the chair.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, is the six-month lead time, is that mandatory six-month, they're going to change that? And can we find out who does need to go to and how long that process takes in the stage?
Yep, so the six-month is stated in the decision that it's six months and then an extension of six months, so I guess they could request a modification of that decision to get more than six months.
Or less than six months?
I don't think they're going to request that modification, but the planning board may, may want to initiate that modification themselves. And then I think once we have the internal meeting between Beta, John Westerling, and myself to discuss the plans and bring those, any concerns or edits up to BHB and Legacy Farms, we can ask that question of what's the process moving forward from here? How long is it going to take? What other approvals you need, and we can get a better picture of doing that.
And then the other question that might be forwarded to them at that time would be, can it be done in a way?
Yes.
You're saying yes it can?
We'll have to ask that.
Yeah, to ask that.
Just clarification through the chair. Phil, do you remember off the top of your head the timing that we spoke about the last time this came up? I thought it was like maybe, once they get the plans, it could be done within two months, which would have been in the summertime, which has just passed, but.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't, I don't know whether we talked about a time, a timeline for that. I mean, if they're only at 75%, we're going to review the plans. So they're, they're looking for comments, and then they gotta get back up, they gotta get, uh, another iteration of the plan. And I don't know where they are with their approval from, nasty or pink, so. So that's the big, that's the big question.
And one more question through the chair. Historically, I don't think any of us were here last time. The light in front of the library and the light in front of School Street on West Main Street. Those of all working with the state and stuff, were you involved in those? It was a while back.
All right, so what's the proposal? Should we have them on the agenda to get an update if they have to add, when they, are you going to, you're going to see if they have an, need an extension? And then they'd have to be on the.
So I think at this point, they need an extension because they, I mean, it's been more than six months since it's been determined that it's necessary, right?
If not very close.
Yeah.
I think they, it was right after the trails decision that we, we, we reviewed the new traffic.
Yeah.
So I can, I can tell Roy to submit a request to extend, it can just be a letter, I would assume. And you guys can tell me if you want them to come in person.
Probably should get an update on the stats.
So kind of tied to that is, one of the requests of one of the residents was how to best get these stats updates across to the public, and so I suggested keeping this as a continuing item on the administrative tasks, kind of like the bus issue, so that if there's anything I said, E-HOP usually provides an update a week after, and this is a good way for the public rather than mailing updates all the time or updating the website, which seems to be a bit challenging.
Sounds like a plan we do have to move forward.
A really good idea. Are there several outstanding Legacy Farms issues, so I don't know if we want to also add the sidewalk, because it's an item that's always at the bottom of the agenda, too.
Just clump them together.
Are we tracking that one?
Yeah.
Sidewalk, I mean, there's the house too, but I don't know if that's more under the select board purview.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, just to, so top level, we want to make sure we communicate with the historic commission and get their feedback on this plan, to use that, to gravel that. And then I think we're in agreement that we would ideally like to have a meeting with the parents, the school committee, and all the involved constituency groups to, to make sure that there's buy-in particularly from the parents. We can, do you want to ask the school committee to do a survey monkey?
That's a good idea.
So that would help, at least to survey the parents, but in whatever way that is easiest.
So I believe they're already doing that.
They are, you are.
They already have a plan to do that, to survey the parents about up or down on this idea.
Yeah, there was, there was, I can't remember, I have to look back, I don't know if it's a survey or a meeting, but I'll, I'll look back if I remember, either way, parents will be brought into the session.
All right, I think we got to move on. Go ahead.
Just may, on the traffic light, this is, I'm speaking for myself, but I think we do want to prioritize that and accelerate it as much as we can. Particularly with the school bus issues, it seems like the traffic light might help, and that's something that, that is within our control and is within our jurisdiction. So just in your communications with Mr. McDonald, I just ask that we prioritize that and keep that moving as quickly as possible, sure.
All right, so there is an item that we were going to talk about, the new sidewalk survey, but we were sure we were going to postpone that, and with John not being here, we're definitely sure we're not. The growth study committee membership and discussion, congratulations to Amy, who's the new chair. Finn Perry will be the new vice chair, and I am going to be clerking for the committee. Do you want to just briefly explain the alternate, do you know the alternate issue?
Oh, I told you from what you said last year, that it wasn't quite posted properly, the way we were going to pick alternates.
So alternates weren't advertised, only the positions are advertised, and then there's, I don't even know how it happened, determination by the board that there would be alternates, and no one caught it, so. The alternate positions themselves should be advertised as alternate positions.
So we're going to do that?
Yes.
And, and identify that the alternates will have, I'm throwing this, this question, that will have voting privileges if regular members are absent to fill the quorum.
And we should specify a voting order, because if one regular, if there are two alternates and only one regular member is gone, we have to determine which alternate will be the voting alternate.
Yeah.
So when we choose the alternates, we should have a priority order, I guess.
Alternate one, alternative two.
Yeah, yeah. Is there anything else that we have to specify about alternates?
If they're going to have a different term likely.
No, what was the?
So right now, everyone has been appointed for the life of the project, so it can be the same.
Yeah, yeah. I can't, I can't imagine why you wouldn't do that way. So we don't have to vote that, you're just going to post that, and then we'll select our lucky candidates, hopefully smoothly, and again. Also, the committee, the growth study committee, in its discussions would really like to invite members from the school committee, the select board, and the appropriation committee to participate at any time. So we, the committee discussed and envisioned ex officio positions so that it can be anybody that they select to come, it doesn't have to be a member of the select board, of the select board, but it can be, it could also be a member of the professional staff if they would want to send somebody. So I put that out to the planning board to consider three more seats that wouldn't necessarily be voting, so would not interfere with the quorum. But we want to make sure that we, we welcome and invite and have those participants as part of it.
Well, this is, that was certainly something that we had talked about during the discussion of the growth study committee and how it was going to be made up. And I'm in favor, particularly appropriations, I think it's necessary to have a dedicated, you know, liaison position, I don't know what you want to call it, but is that, is that your intention, is that this committee would ask for one person to be designated, or just please come if you can? What do you think?
I think the growth study committee had voted unanimously to request liaison roles for select one, or select board, school committee and appropriations committee, and they asked the planning board to consider posting those.
Okay, yeah, so, so, yeah, I would, I would be in favor of that. And, and I think that that is certainly something that was in our discussion during the formation of this committee. And we actually at the time said, let's form the committee with the smaller number and let the committee discuss it, which they have, and they've come back to us. So this is, is certainly within what we were considering all along.
Anybody else? Any thoughts?
I agree, it worked out well for the center school review committee, having a board not coming to the board in particular circumstance, of course, so it's useful.
Yeah, and I think a designated member then is aware that they can put it in their schedule and that, you know, it's their, it's their part that they're doing with the committee, I think that's a nice idea, to have it to be a committed member.
So I'll entertain a motion from this committee to support, to add those three liaison slots that we identified as ex officio positions, from one designated from the select board, one from the school committee, and one from the appropriation committee.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying.
John has a question.
If I may ask, are they going to be, they're not going to be voting positions?
I don't, I think that we envision not so that, because typically paid staff, for example, if they were coming, wouldn't, wouldn't vote in a, in a meeting.
And would they be designated by the board, or they'd be designated by the board and then require approval by the planning board?
There would be no required approval by the planning board, it's, it's whoever those boards or committees.
So they would essentially do the.
That's my, that's my vision.
Isn't Mr. Manon, isn't he already from appropriations committee, so we already have a representative?
Yeah, but the appropriation committee will pick, they'll have their own process. No, no.
He's not on.
He's not appointed. The appropriation committee is, is unique in that they can't serve on other boards and committees unless it's this way, as an ex officio role.
So I think that answers the question, is whether they have voting members.
Right.
Yeah, he would definitely, or whoever the appropriation committee selects.
But you can't have someone from the appropriations committee.
That's, that's correct, that's right.
So just to be clean, non-voting members.
Yeah.
But we want their voice.
Yeah, but we don't have to approve it, they, they get to pick, just like the chamber picked their representatives.
So I'll reach out to them and request these designated.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, yes, that would be great. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes from July twenty-second.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
The copy that we had said draft not finished, is that because?
It's finished.
It is, okay, just checking.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, awesome. Alright, so we are gonna have folks from Whisperway first, if you can come forward.
And while I'm before, I don't think anybody else is here that came in for the Blueberry Lane discussion. And I know a few people coming in late, that's not gonna be on the agenda tonight. So we've already made that decision in advance, so.
Certain dates, no?
The twenty-eighth of October.
Twenty-first of October.
Yep.
There's plenty of seats over here, too.
John, take us away.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Kobe just reminded me that that hearing was not for the, to continue.
There was.
Talked about it, didn't officially open all the, all the public hearings.
Ah, there you go. I'll entertain a motion to open all the public hearings that were on our agenda, thank you.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? You were right, Carrie.
Only for Sunday night, so, and you haven't set the meeting a few weeks ago.
I gotcha. Okay, so, so we'll need to vote, so that one is all set, because we voted to.
No, no.
Okay, but, but that one has been continued, we don't have to address it again, right? Kobe, you gotta run for planning board. Okay, Whisperway. You want to just briefly introduce where we are?
So, we have addressed all of Phil's comments and have, who, Phil, I believe. It's pretty much the, the same, there were no little details that we sorted out over, since the last meeting. So we're hoping that, obviously if there's any other questions that the board has, we're happy to try and address them. But hoping to get an approval.
And Phil, you're square with it?
Yes, we had a special Dan, in the process, we, back and forth relative to the turnarounds for fire trucks.
Yes.
And driveways. He mentioned that they really are, they haven't designed each of the sites, so that, that, that house location may move.
Yeah.
So, so we recommend that you include a condition, that for any shared driveway, particularly, you know, when they go to construct them, that you, they provide a plan for the fire department and myself to review.
Okay, and that's certainly.
Absolutely.
Okay. John, take us away on any comments you have.
So, we went back and forth between Beta, the applicant, and myself with the decision, the draft decision. The draft decision itself is written as one document, there are two permits that are needed. So it's the special permit from the USLPD, and it's the definitive subdivision plan approval. I've gone and just written them as one. The board can use that as a framework to identify findings and conditions, and then have me split it into two. Kobe and I have been talking, I guess usually it's done as two, because if somebody were to appeal, they would be appealing both, when they may only want to feel the special permit. But on the other hand, if you don't get a special permit, you can't really do the subdivision, so I don't know if it necessarily matters. But it could be cleaner to just split it into two if the board would like me to do that, happy to do that. But on that, I think everything has been addressed. Beta has signed off on pretty much everything, we've included that, I believe we included that condition into the decision. But if not, I can edit that to include it. Anyone has any questions, happy to answer them.
Just for the public's information, we did walk through, there's a pretty extensive list of waivers, and we pounded through those ahead of time. And in so doing, we walked through a lot of the issues that I think might have been addressed on the agenda. So there are, there are some open items on the agenda that detailed discussion and public comment. The public is always welcome to comment here. I don't think we've ever had anybody from the public comment on, on this hearing. So if you are here to speak, or ask questions, or comment on this, please make sure you make yourself known as we go through the agenda items, probably pretty quickly. We do want to make sure that if somebody from the public is here, they are heard, however.
Should they just raise their hand now?
Is anybody here to speak on the Whisperway from the public? Okay, so make sure that you, as we go through, we'll make sure that we leave time for that. Okay, so, do any members of the board have any questions or issues on the vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow, truck traffic flow, or emergency vehicle access? This is agenda item number five point one. Yes?
We still, excuse me, through the chair, we're not, we're still on Whisperway with those discussions. And it was just on light of what came up on the bus issue with legacy farms. I've attended other meetings on Whisperway, I didn't have any discussion at that point, but I was just curious about where the buses would be handled here. And is there adequate places for the students to, for the buses to get through? That's the only question.
Sure.
So this would not be a public way at all, right?
It is.
It is a public.
It will be eventually, but until it's a public way, the, the students would be picked up on the, on Wood Street. The buses would, would come, approach, correct me if I'm wrong, but would approach on Wood Street and would necessarily, by, by convention, would approach on the side of the road that is, Whisperway is on. They would, they very rarely have children crossing Wood Street, and I could be wrong, but I, I don't think that they, they plan that. They, they loop up and down Wood Street. So they would, the children would wait at the, at the base. Because the bus would approach on Wood Street, traffic would stop in both directions when the bus is picking up children or, or letting them go.
There's a total of twelve homes here, as opposed to, I can see farms as a.
It's hundreds.
Hundreds of students. Again, just because.
No, it is a good question, thank you. So, any questions on five point two intended uses? Any questions on stormwater management or comments? I'm going through the agenda, the outline.
First comment.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So I just recall, one item that was, is still, still needed some discussion was the clearing of the.
Phasing plan.
The phasing plan.
Oh, okay.
So they provided a phasing plan. So I think maybe there should be some discussion in terms of how we activate the next phase, in order just to make sure, you know, we don't have the same issues that the legacy, whereas a lot of, a lot of seven.
Is there a condition about the phasing plan?
It was, the phasing plan is included in the, in the set that was last submitted.
If you can just talk to it briefly, that would be helpful.
So we have three, four phases. The first phase would be the construction of, or the upgrade of, of the existing Whisperway. And it includes the clearing up to the, the leaching, up to including the area for the leaching field. Then, once that area is generally stabilized, we're looking at this group of houses. I'm sorry, the other phase one also included this detention point. Which is, that's typical construction for a subdivision, would include the roadway and the detention basins, because that's, the detention basins are what handle the silt. So the second phase is one, two, three, four homes there.
Which numbers?
Lots. One, three, four, and five. Lot two is already an existing home.
Yeah.
So it's not being. Then, phase three includes.
Six, seven, and eight.
Yes, no, seven, eight, and ten. I'm sorry, you're right, six, seven, eight, and ten. Again, nine being an existing home. And then phase four being the two that are off. Not off of, that are being, starting off of Wood Street, not off of.
And I believe it's, and I believe that it's worth it, that phase four could be done with any of the, with any other phase.
Yeah, so.
Lot, any other.
If that would be.
It's kind of a standalone of two lots.
I think Phil would agree that any sultation that's created over in phase four isn't going to be compounded with any of these phases. It's in its own area, so it's not necessarily, doesn't need to be sequenced.
Do you have any objection to us putting that in, into the decision? The phasing?
The phasing?
That, that, well, I think we'd like it that phase four would be.
Would not be.
Or that the two lots would be able to be done with any other phase.
Yeah, I, so I understood that, and, and I don't have any objection to that, but we'll put it into the decision.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I would concur with Mary, to sort of forward that conversation a little bit, as to where the parents, it's, if you average two students per household, you know, and every now and then it'll get more or less. You've got maybe eighteen kids coming, either middle school, elementary, or high school. So the question is, where are the parents' homes to park for the kids? Is there adequate space, because it's all wetlands at that entry? Has anyone thought to that?
We haven't thought about the school bus, school bus much, but, I mean, typically they stop in the road and, you know, they stop traffic both ways and they load trucks and off they go.
So the question is, is there enough room for them to stay off the road while they're waiting in those locations? And can we get maybe some information back as to a detail on that?
There's, there's no, there's absolutely no room where that entrance is because of the wetlands, for us to say widen the pavement in order to do so. And you're talking about a maximum, say, of eighteen cars. And I can't imagine that you're gonna have.
Eighteen, eighteen kids.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, twelve, ten cars, you're saying a max, there's ten households. Right, so my guess is that except for the very younger grades, that the bus, even when this is accepted, is still gonna stop at Wood Street. It's not gonna.
That's, that's my assumption as well.
Yeah, I don't think they got that exact.
So, I think as you, if you go through town, any of the bus stops, I'm sure are picking up easily ten households worth of children. And they don't have, you don't have bus stops all over town.
So, so if you were, if we're.
I don't, so, I honestly don't think it's an issue. I, I don't think we're gonna make a change to this plan for the bus stop. From, from my perspective, it is absolutely safer for the bus to be on Wood Street and stop traffic there than it is to have it loop in in any way and potentially not stop traffic there.
But what I'm thinking is, being in Compressor Drive, which is another cul-de-sac type of community, where we have twelve to fourteen homes, on any given day, I would much prefer my kid, when he was that age, and later that age, that they were up on a sidewalk, not on the road.
There is, there is a sidewalk all the way down Whisperway to Wood Street.
And that's on the right-hand side of the road, so the bus would.
It, it's, yeah.
So the bus would come past the street, so nobody could get out, so that would be safer. Okay. Thanks for that thought.
Yeah. So stormwater, you're satisfied with the phasing as long as it's part of the condition?
Good.
Okay, thank you. So John, you'll put that in the conditions?
Yep.
Sightlighting? I'm just gonna look up and down and see if anybody.
If I.
Go ahead, yes?
The sightlighting, just wanted to confirm that we had had some discussion about, you know, driveway entrance lighting. Basically, I don't remember the terminology people were using.
We waived the name for streetlights, as long as there would be wayfinding lights at the driveways.
There you go, wayfinding lights, yeah, so it's in here?
Well, so is that in.
There is a condition of low level, I forget how I worded it, but I specified for the purpose of assisting emergency services in finding addresses.
Good, that, that's in the condition.
That's a condition.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry, this is just a continued thought, and I just didn't want to pass it before I forget it. For that sidewalk, because this is a phased project, is there a way we can have a conversation about the phasing, about that sidewalk, so that we don't run into the same situation that we are with legacy farms, where they, so they have a sidewalk that is clean?
We would build a sidewalk with phase one.
With phase one, okay.
And when the first lots get released, the sidewalk will be in there.
Okay.
But at least down to the last two hundred feet, you know, across the wetland and out to Wood Street. It might not be done in front of the house.
And at that time, would it be the responsibility of the town to plow it?
No.
No.
Not till it's accepted.
They will never plow.
They would never do the sidewalk plowing?
That's my guess.
They don't plow the sidewalks.
They don't plow the sidewalks.
They don't plow the sidewalks, so it's dangerous.
Only for the, only for the kids who are within walking distance of school.
True, true. Something to be aware of.
Yeah.
Not even within walking distance, has a sidewalk though.
No, that's for sure.
Sorry.
Alright, it's true. Okay. Sightlighting is okay?
Yep.
Utilities, water sewer, everybody's fine with that? No dumpsters, no parking lot layout, did we even talk about snow?
Yeah, so not to belabor this, not to belabor this, but so now it's a private road, it's gonna get plowed privately, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and in that, we will consider, can we, should we write it into considerations? And should we write it so that they consider the fact that there will be children standing there, whether they're four to six? So at least they have a place where parents can drop them safely.
What does that mean, Dan?
What I'm saying is that, well, this is a private road, it's not accepted by the town.
I got that.
Therefore, you privately plow it and provide a six-square-foot area where the children can stand.
It's gonna be a sidewalk, right?
Right, but it has to be plowed, they will provide a plowed area for them to stand, because it's a problem of, it's a problem of, I'm not making this up, it's a problem of, with driving, even with the town as we have it, because we have these high drifts of snow that are plowed, and no one can see. So I'm just making sure in the interim that they are appropriately aware.
We'll make sure of an area for the kids to stand in.
So is that a condition? Condition to plowing, there were no more. Conditions to plowing, they would normally do, there'll be a small area.
I don't think that needs to be a separate condition.
I don't either, I mean, you're gonna have to, while you maintain it, you'll have to plow the sidewalks for the kids. While you don't maintain it, it'll be up to the residents.
So it's, I mean, I think it's enough to be in the minutes that, I mean, he's, he's obviously working hard to make it a nice environment, so.
Any questions on noise? Acrosswalks and sidewalks, so the sidewalk we have, at least down to Wood Street is included in phase one?
Yes.
And then the whole place will be sidewalked? When it's complete?
On one side.
On one side? Any question anymore?
No, sorry, just a few. No, you've used them all.
I was ready for the sidewalk.
I've used them all up.
Um, is there any issues with signage, not that I know of?
It was just, uh, excuse me, the chair. There's gonna be signage for the trailheads and more parking lots.
Yes.
Yeah, I actually agreed to move that sign, work with the hall to come up with a better location for it. To bury it down, it'll be more close to the road, to the new road.
Um, so is, that's not part of our conditions, the sign?
Can be, it's not.
I know it can be, but I don't know that it needs to be because you have an arrangement with halt.
I would agree to go with halt.
And I feel like.
It's on the halt committee, I think.
Yeah, I feel like we wanna just leave that.
It could be part of the conservation restriction that they put on, that they deed over to halt. It doesn't have to be a plan or just.
Solar panels, alternative energy? It's kind of wooded in there.
Just clear up the signage. If there was gonna be a permanent sign of the entrance to the road, we haven't seen that yet, right?
You mean like a, like a sub, suburban identity, I, I actually wasn't planning on.
No, I think it's fine, but if you would come back for a privilege, you want to do that, right?
All right.
For a good design reboard.
So just a street sign?
That's there already.
That's already there, right? So if you, if you put an additional sign in, you'd come back before designer reboard?
Will do.
Um, anybody with questions on solar panels?
Yes, please.
Yeah?
So, um, being as 2019, do you guys consider that in your plans?
We haven't considered them in the plan, other than we would like to encourage solar panels on the houses. And we haven't done it as of yet on the new construction, but we're, we plan to look into it. We have the ability to site the houses properly while we're, before we get going, so that's on our list of things to do. If people are interested in solar panels, we'll be happy to help them.
Well, the best time to do it is when you're building the house, it's the most affordable time. It makes the value of the house more increase as well.
It's actually part of the building code now that all houses have to be solar-ready. If they, there are exemptions, but just so you all know.
Good, thank you. Additional discussion on impacts on schools, municipal services, and the value of neighboring residential properties.
So make the highway 495 work.
Right?
I don't have a particular current concerns, but I just think it would always be a good practice of ours to notify the school department about how many new homes were moved, so they'll be expecting them.
And the fire chief is here as always and is, is satisfied with what we've done here?
I am, actually, in fact, to develop or to take on the idea of the driveways, the common driveways to sprinkle those houses, that really is the first step of having a model that can lower the heavy manpower intensive calls that we go to and starts to initiate the life safety aspect of the, before we can get there, so that hasn't been a strong push for that before, so let's give a lot of credit for the wonderful mention of that, thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions on 5.12? 5.13, town, department, and boards and committees comments not covered above, I don't believe in any. All right. Any additional new comments, questions, information?
There was, there is something in the conditions related to working on the parking for horse trailers.
Oh, yes, I saw that too.
So I just, you know, wanted to bring it up and just.
Well, okay, so the last time Jane and I looked at the site without the blue road, that there is a way to, to get horse trailers in there, but I think and it would be to, to widen the area that is along Wood Street. It would be on the, I think that, oh, I know, on the town land, town land is huge there, for whatever reason, probably, I don't know why, maybe because 495 influenced it or something like. We could widen Wood Street, like, fill an area off of Wood Street. And you'd be able to park a couple, I think a couple rigs there. But I, I, you weren't, I remember you, and you weren't too pleased with that location. But I mean, I'd certainly be willing to look at it again and.
It's not the best, I believe, if you want to look at it.
Yeah. I mean, I think it could work. Then, and the other thing would be to widen that common drive and have it beside the common drive, but then.
The far, the two, those two lots?
Yeah.
Yep.
No?
Nope.
No.
No, 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 no.
So it would be in here.
Yeah.
And it'd be pretty much the same as, as just widening up down here. Maybe it would be off of, again, we can look at that as well, Jane, but so then that will require backing up, you know, and remember we talked about that as well? Then you'd be backing the trailers out. I mean, you can have someone help you back it up and all that, and have people eye-balling, but I think it's.
Is that just a flat grass?
It is pretty flat, but it's, that road's pretty busy.
No, yeah, could we back the horse trailers, if we pull up to the side here, we can just back here?
They're all getting reinforced, so.
It's kind of a slow here too.
Yeah.
Still had any conditions in your draft decision?
Yeah. So if I may, just clarify that whole issue. It was in the previous decision.
It was.
I left it in highlighted because I was unfamiliar with it. And Ron and I discussed, and basically he was saying he wasn't really proposing it this time, but I had already sent the decision out to you guys, so left it in there to discuss, but it doesn't have to be.
So that is, yeah, that is, one of the reasons I raised it is because we hadn't been discussing it within this plan, this new plan. And, and I just wondered whether or not it's at all feasible at this point, so. And the, the whole idea of backing out trailers onto Wood Street is pretty awful.
But I can work with Ron and we can make that area down on Wood Street wide enough so we can safely get off the road and load and unload the horses and walk out.
That, yeah, so is, if, you know, well, that's safer than nothing at all, I guess.
Well, it's beautiful property, handling roads, and the trails that he's developed are just lovely.
Yeah.
It's a unique piece of property and I just hate the, so, you know, we can work together.
Okay. It, it doesn't, and, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't need to be a condition in our decision, but I did wanna discuss it, but, you know, I certainly knew that to.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I thought that the existing one is on the other side of the road.
It is, the existing is parking area.
Parking area?
Yes.
Now, for, for a while, I thought we weren't gonna touch it.
No, no.
We're not.
We're just going to make sure that there's good access off of the new pavement because it'll be, it'll be graded something different, so.
But there's no place to turn around.
That's never where the horses were gonna be, Dave. That's never where the horses were gonna be, the horses were always gonna be, the horse trailers on the other side that connects to horse, horse trails on that side.
The parking area is just a gravel area, but you can turn around and it's, it functions pretty well, yeah. I've seen half of those cars in there.
So. Ron? So Ron, how do you feel about including something about that in the conditions or not?
In, out on, out on the road?
Yeah, what you were just talking about.
Well, I.
I don't know that you should include it as a condition, just because it, it would be within the right-of-way. And I'm, I'm not sure, there's gonna be approvals he's gonna have.
I, I think it's gonna have to, it's, it's gonna have to get approved by somebody.
Right.
Because it's, it's, it's more than likely gonna be on town land.
What's the number, what page is that on?
Page one.
Is it nine?
Well, 216.
She says 352 and I.
And also, Muriel, it's, it's kind of a shoot-from-hip thing on Jane's part, whether she wants to, you know, whether she thinks it's gonna be safe.
No, I, I agree, that's why I asked the question.
But I'm willing to.
So I appreciate that there's a willingness to look at that as an opportunity because this, you know, this is a unique opportunity. But I, I feel the same way that it might not be the best to put it in the decision, but, but, you know.
We'll work it out.
Okay.
Possibly with the Trails Committee, right? Do they, do they work on horse trails as well?
No, it's, I'm trying to get started.
You're trying to get started.
Another project.
So I, I feel reluctant to include it, but I feel reluctant to, to drop it entirely too because that's a really nifty opportunity, so as we look across the table, if everybody is gonna work as hard as they can to try and make something possible.
Absolutely.
That satisfies me.
Just to back up, I, Jane and I met and, you know, I went over the, what we could do and, you know, she wasn't too crazy about it.
Yeah.
But, you know, now, now we're there.
Plan B, Plan B didn't work as far, now we're back to Plan A.
Yeah.
So we're trying to make it better.
So to the chair, are you willing to fund any portion of it?
Oh, fund all, yeah. If I may, propose a condition that I think might be.
Better?
Agreeable for everybody. Uh, so basically change the existing condition to say, the applicant shall, shall work with the town to evaluate a parking area for horse trailers within the open space area on the northeast corner of the property. And then take out the sentence, the area shall be shown on the definitive subdivision plan.
If I may, through the chair, yeah? It shouldn't say within the open space area because this might be on town land instead of in the open space of the plan itself.
So maybe say, take out the within the open space area.
But just at, in, on the northeast corner, yeah, because that leaves it fairly broad.
In the vicinity of the northeast corner, something like that. Sounds good.
So the applicant shall work with the town to evaluate a parking area for horse trailers along the northeast corner.
Evaluate and potentially install?
But what are we requiring?
Right, yeah.
I'd be okay with just removing it.
So this is the. This is the property line in there.
I don't know that evaluating it helps us either, but.
Yeah, well, Jane and I will make it work.
So it's, it's, evaluate's pretty big, but it is.
I think we need to have it in, not for this case, but for future cases where we work with developers and say, well, they didn't have it in theirs, why should we have it in there? It's just, it's, it's a nice to keep it in there, and I'm sure they'll, they'll do their best to work it out.
Yeah, I think it speaks to the intent anyway, you know, it doesn't have any standard. For whatever that's worth.
How's everybody feeling? Dave, what are you thinking down there?
I did have a few questions, just.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we don't, did we say we don't have a maximum drive length?
We do not, right.
And, and the length of the cul-de-sac was over a thousand feet or roughly? One thousand. One thousand, exactly, I guess. And do we have anything on the trails? Potential trail, connection of trails that might be, being.
Yeah, they're in there.
You know, cut off, if existing trails.
So they're included, oh.
They're included in the plan.
They're included in the plan.
Okay.
So there's a condition, through the chair, there's a condition that says, the project shall maintain existing walking trails where possible as well as make a concerted effort to establish new publicly accessible trails within the onsite working space. And I just wanted to note as well, from what the fire chief was saying, that I believe the three or four longest driveways are gonna be the houses that are sprinkled.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, good.
Muriel?
I have nothing else.
Here. All right, so over, under on the horse trails, out or in with the word design versus evaluate? Evaluate doesn't really mean anything.
I bet the design.
Evaluate.
Design.
Lied in with design, the way he, he rewrote it.
Design. Design or evaluate horse tra, horse parking, horse trailer? Wait, that was three evaluate.
We should survey the horses.
All right, so all those in favor of asking the developer to do his best to design a parking area on the northeast corner, show of hands.
I'm not, I'm not committed to doing this.
Do you mind us, but we're just asking you to do your best to design it. We understand that, you know, you don't walk on water and it might not be possible. Okay. But evaluate doesn't really help us, I don't think, so. All right. Any other special permit findings? Any other conditions to suggest?
Just the ones that are in the draft decision.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, do you include those?
I did not.
Which one?
So there's two, that is, three. One is that the infiltration basin, the evaluate is required to be reviewed by a town official before it's home and seeded. Evaluate the soils and.
Evaluate it and something by a town official?
Evaluate, observe the soils to confirm that they are in alignment with the design assumptions for infiltration and.
I have it in email, but I can't access my email, so I can't read them off too, but if you wanna include the conditions from beta.
I sure do. Yeah, I sure do.
And then there's, there's two involving stormwater pollution prevention. One is to provide a copy, file, signed copy to the. And the second is that the contractor shall provide stormwater pollution prevention reports through the construction. I believe that should be.
That's in there already?
It should be, I'm not seeing it right now, but I will add it if it's in.
Through the chair, John's referring to SW one, two, and three on the newest letter from today, or?
Yeah, I just gave him my copy.
This is yours.
Oh, the newest letter from today.
This is from Ever Source.
Thank goodness, okay.
Well, that was the Eversource one.
Phil sent an email, you sent me.
This is not this year.
He sent an email separately with the conditions.
Okay, and you have them?
I have, it's just not at the moment.
All right. Can I ask the board on your feeling on combining two decisions or separating them? I have a strong feeling I would like to keep them separate, but how does everybody else feel?
Can be different.
I would go with your, your feeling.
Cut them separate in the past, I'll keep it separate now. Hey, good, Gary?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, so we're, we're gonna, the decision is drafted altogether, but we're gonna have two separate decisions. Okay. All right. So for the open space special permit, John, we have your comments. So the development meets the purpose of an open space and landscape preservation development as described in 210-106, and we understand this to be true. The development standards contained in 210-112A through, one through four have been met. The common open space is designed in accordance with the standards as set forth in 210-113B. The common open space is designed in accordance with the standards set forth in 210-113C. The parcel could be developed as a conventional subdivision under existing local, state, and federal land use regulations, and the open space and landscape preservation development provides for efficient use and delivery of municipal and other services and infrastructure. Anybody have any comments or questions on that? So, tell me out with the decision, John, how are we gonna separate this out? Just vote, just vote the-
So, we can amend, so it can be done, I guess, one of two ways. We can put in the decision to replace the previous decision with this one, or we can write the decision that amends specific findings and conditions of a previous decision. I would recommend we go and just have it replaced, because it's a completely different project-
Yes.
-that was previously approved.
I think that makes sense.
Yes, but you have a combined decision, that's my question.
I do, so it would just basically be, I would be splitting apart the findings into two different decisions, and then the conditions that apply to the subdivision into one decision, and the conditions that apply to the special permit in another decision.
Okay, so I'm gonna walk through the whole thing. Do you wanna walk, I don't let you walk through the whole thing.
So, the findings, section E, so I think A, B, C will all be written as, followed by the minutes and stuff like that. That's the discussion, the special permit criteria, so, and that will be just tr, written from what's in the actual regulations.
Yeah.
For each special permit and the subdivision. The general findings of fact will apply likely for both, because it's just the general project details.
Okay.
And then the specific findings will be specific to what you just went through with the special permit, and then whatever's applied to the subdivision will apply in the subdivision decision. And then the decision and conditions will also be listed, and that will, I think, in the, so there's waivers that were requested that were both for the special permit and then also for the subdivision. So, those will be broken apart, so the deci, the waivers for the subdivision will be included in that decision.
Yeah.
The waivers for the special permit will be sectioned off in that decision. And then the conditions that apply to whatever they apply to will be in their respective decision.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to do me a favor on this one, after we vote it. I'm gonna ask you to send it to me and one other person to review it before we sign it.
Yep.
Just 'cause, I just want two eyes on it to make sure, after we- Okay, so, I will entertain a motion on the open space special permit with the conditions as detailed in the draft decision, understanding that the conditions that apply to the special permit will be separated out for the special permit.
I move that we pass that motion.
Okay, okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Is there anybody who is particularly excited about being the second, second reader?
I'd love to be.
That's awesome. Thank you. Okay, so both Gary and I, that'd be great. All right, any questions, concerns? All those in favor of the special permit, I'm sorry?
Was that seconded?
Yes.
It was, thank you. Don't ask me who, but it was. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. And I will entertain a motion on the definitive subdivision plan to approve in the similar fashion.
I motion that we approve the definitive subdivision plan as listed.
In the draft decision.
In the draft decision.
In the draft decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question? Did you have-
Just sorry, do you want to-
I'm getting a little touchy here, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And just to clarify, that necessarily means that all those waivers that we had approved previously are all included in the decisions?
Probably tell us when that-
What's that?
Tell us when that-
I am sorry. And I, yeah, I'll-
I don't remember.
We did.
Okay.
We voted, right? Yeah. I really lost my mind.
I was reading, sorry.
I'll entertain a motion to-
John has it.
Close the public hearing. And I'm gonna admit, I didn't remember, somebody had to remind me.
Someone. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, thanks for your patience.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
That's a lot of information.
All right, right on time.
Listen, it's not a lack of trying, they're very, okay. So, number two, we are going to have 9799 South Street.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The 76 Main Street still needs to be voted.
Oh, okay.
And Maspadoc needs to be voted to continue.
Yes, we might as well do that in order. We don't have to take any action on the floor. Well, we have one, two, three, four, five of us, that's a forum. Can I entertain a motion to, to approve the, approve the withdrawal or allow the-
Yeah, allow the withdrawal.
Allow the withdrawal of 76 Main Street?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Don't move.
Any discussion, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And just note that Gary and I are here. Thank you, and we don't have to take any action on the floor.
We have to move to continue Maspadoc?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to continue Maspadoc Woods to the meeting on October seventh.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. We're gonna whistle a happy tune for just two minutes. Apparently. Just a reminder, if anybody is here for the Blueberry Lane Abbott Farm Abbott Realty Trust hearing, that has been continued to October twenty-eighth. You'll be proud to get business done while you're out there.
While we have a minute, can I say something?
Sure, if it's relevant.
Well, sure, I wanna thank Chief Slaman for being such a great example, saving lives.
Saving lives.
And inspiring people to take classes and learn how to do that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
What? Can I mention, I noticed, I looked at my phone when I left the room, and that someone recorded HCAM not being able to hear the sound. They recorded trying to watch at home, they couldn't hear.
Or us?
Anything.
Anything. So, our sound isn't going out?
Maybe not live, maybe not live. Maybe the recording won't.
People at home-
People, people at home are recording not being able to hear the sound?
Can't hear the sound?
Right.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, thank you.
Seems to be even here, fine.
This car's a loop.
All right. Keep them missing.
HCAM.
So, while we also have dead time-
Yeah.
How does everyone like meeting here? Should I schedule the next meeting for here?
I like it better than I found it, man.
I like it. I mean, there might be some King story going on.
TV monitor.
I really miss the TV monitor.
We can try and reorganize, so maybe the board's over there and set that up.
Yeah.
It's, it was tough, because we, we wanted to put you guys over there, but then you have this door right in front of you, and you wouldn't be able to see the monitor. So, it's either here or there. So, we can try there next time if you want.
I'm happy to try it one more ti, one more time, and then also see if we're able to solve the sound. If we're not able to solve the sound, then it will be taped anyway.
Right.
Right, so, eventually there will be sound, it's just frustrating.
I think we're on back.
Okay, awesome. So, we are on to the public hearing for 9799 South Street. Thank you for your patience.
Evening, Joe Magda, Joe Roy, Harold Ziegian, owner, manager of Southfield Properties. Since we left you folks last, we have had a couple of very productive meetings with some of the other players in this process. We met in August for both design review and conservation permission. We discussed elements, Andy Love, Architect, has joined us here this evening. We discussed elements with regard to the treatments, the glass, the screening of the lower levels, exhausted quite a few of those topics. We came out of there with a consensus that the designs were solid. Couple of issues came up in a memo regarding snow stakes and protect the traffic islands, and the fact that signage would have to be reviewed individually. They couldn't give us a bike approval for that that night, so we will be back to see them once the issues regarding signage has worked out. We also met with Conservation on the twentieth and went through the designs with that group. As a result of that discussion, we've made some changes to the site plans, which we forwarded to the board last week. They asked us to rework the limit of the wetlands resource areas along that northeast side and to include the existing detention basin because of the establishment of wetlands vegetation in there. Chief Lee, Ken and I tails, to make that a regulated resource area. So, we've added that to the plans and associated above the notes. They asked us to punch up the operation maintenance for long-term inspection and maintenance activities. Folks at Southfield have been doing it informally since 2004, but we put together some protocols to formalize that process. Inspections of the closed drainage system, catch basins, manholes, detention basin, the sweeping of the parking lots and driveways. Put together some ideas about standard reports and timing of reporting. Pulled all that together at the request of the commission and have included it in the package sent off to this board. We also added another sheet to the package. Like yourselves, Conservation's concerned about impact site line, but they also have a mandate to focus in on the areas within jurisdiction a few of those wetlands resource areas. So, we added sheet 1.9 to spell out extra activities under their review. And we received approval that night, and that information was forwarded to them last week, so we should get an order of condition sheet.
All right.
In addition to that, we added some, we made redundant, we added some information with regard to the lighting. It was in the original package. There was a question as to just what fixtures were going to be included, how folks could research those, so we sent along cut sheets, whole detail for construction, and highlighted just what fixtures would be where the building mounted as opposed to the light pole mounted. And all that stuff is again in that package perhaps a couple of times, but it was all there.
John?
So, the comments that we received are basically from the design review board. They approved to recommend approval by the planning board unanimously. They had two comments, one that Joe mentioned about the signs, and the other one that applicant confirmed, snow stakes were utilized in order to better preserve the health of the trees with regard to snow plowing. There's a concern that the piles would damage the trees, so snow stakes were said to be, were going to be used, and they just wanted to confirm that fact. DPW did not have any comments on that application, and I believe that was really it.
Any questions or concerns? Just as a reminder to everybody here and the public, this is minor site cha, site plan change. So-
We should ask for public comment, right?
Yeah, if there is any comment from the public? Sure.
Question, we have a map, want to re-screw up the record? Solar panels, because we've been talking about solar energy, is that in the design?
We, we are actively working on a plan. I've actually got schematics, and my goal is to, is to try to pull solar on that roof. We also have provisions for electric cars on the site. As we have, we feel we have a demographic that is going to be interested in pursuing that, that purpose as well.
If I may, a follow-up question, I was just looking that you're going to put internal office spaces, labs, and clean rooms, conference rooms. Have you, and I apologize if I don't know the detail of this, have you, is this, have you looked at and what is going to, what kind of businesses and things would be using the labs and the clean rooms? And has that been approved and addressed?
Well, the entire facility is going to be used by like a-
Oh, by like a, okay.
Yes, this is just a single user.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve this, the minor site plan changes.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Appreciate your time. I will entertain a motion to close that hearing. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? What would I do without my, I would never remember that, that's why. Okay, I am gonna entertain the public hearing for 223 Pond Street, the scenic road permit, Christine and Andre Naved. Hello?
Dan McPare representing Christine and Andre.
I have a couple extra copies, thanks. Only gave enough for everybody.
Can we do this, Parker?
Should be, yes. So, can we just proceed?
Yes, please.
Christine and Andre, I'm in the evil position after we placed their cesspool that served in patently for six to seven years with a septic system. We were retained to design that new one. If you look at the plan, the leaking field itself is kind of constructed up behind the house in the field up there, where the bulk of the destruction is gonna happen. And that's gonna be accessed through an existing driveway and stone wall opening further down Pond Street. So, the septic tanks themselves have to be up close into the house, where the plumbing comes out of the foundation. And there's no way to access that area from the rear, because of some existing stone walls and the speech is so slow. So, we're asking permission to remove a portion of that stone wall so the septic contractor can access right up Pond Street to excavate for those tanks, and for the tank truck actually to deliver those tanks. Clarification, we temporarily- Temporarily, exactly.
Okay, and then replace.
And then replace.
In the style of the existing wall.
As best as can be.
As best as possible. All right, I'll start, I'm gonna start to my left, Dave, do you make-
I'm also.
Muriel?
Just take lots of pictures, and don't try to make it prettier than it was, just maybe. That's it.
I, I'm all for it.
I just wanna clarify, there are trees in the photograph, but I assume they're not in the right of way.
They're, they're on private property.
They're on the private property, yeah, okay.
Andre has a stockpile of trees up the back, he's probably- Andre has a stockpile of trees up the back he's probably replacing.
That's my question too, I'm also. Okay, John?
No comments? DPW reviewed it, they had no comments.
Righty. I have to get to my appropriate number here. Which number?
If I may, is there any public comment?
Thank you.
It's number nine on the...
Thank you, it took me a minute, I was, I did it to myself going out of order.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, there we go, thank you. Okay, so the decision criteria, the degree to which the proposed work would adversely affect the scenic and aesthetic values upon which the scenic road designation was originally based. So that's why we encourage you to take pictures and encourage you to bring those rocks back in as natural a state as possible to match the existing wall. The necessity of the proposed work in terms of public safety, welfare, or convenience, I think we have satisfied that it's necessary. There is no compensatory action such as replacement of trees except for you're going to put the wall, the stones back.
Yes.
The availability of reasonable alternatives to the proposed work which could reduce or eliminate anticipated damage to trees or stone walls, I think that that's the only way it can be done. Whether the proposed work would compromise or harm other environmental or historic values, I think we've satisfied that that won't happen. And the consistency of the proposed work with previously adopted town plans and policies, and I see no conflict. Any issues at all? I will entertain a motion to approve the scenic road permit for 223 Pond Streets.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? You're all set, thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there any waiting period or how does it actually work?
So I will draft the decision and file it and there's an appeal period.
We have a couple of weeks to do it, it probably won't take that long.
I should be able to get it to you soon.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Those in favor, you got it, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? I think that's the first one I have remembered on my own.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, I'm going to take care of it. All right, number three, number four. All right, number four, the new public hearing for 57 Hayton Row, major site plan review, Keith Chesmore, Chesmore Funeral Home and Cremation Services.
My name is Joyce Haste, I'm from GLM Engineering, and I'm here this evening with the owner Keith Chesmore and the builder Mark Bilker. And we're here for... So the new site plan, the new site plan has been a proposed addition to the existing structure that will involve a certain portion of the building and a structural addition, which is a gross floor area, greater than 50% of what's there now, and have a total area, gross floor area, of greater than 5,000 square feet. So if you look on the plan, you can see that right now we have the brown areas in this building as well as the barn garage area over to the side. So this area here we've demolished and this orange area here is the addition that we're destroying. The purpose of the addition is to create a chapel area that's not cuffed and multiple for the rooms, it's a large area that will be safe and have a good layout within. The lower area will contain funeral service area and then also a six-car garage. There will also have trucks, or trucks, you'll be able to come in and be unloaded within the building. And then there will be, as there is now, an apartment on the upper level of this. So the area, again, this is the area of addition, as you said, two decks only, that is. The existing apartment layer is what you see now, the dark, the darker gray area. The only pavement that we're adding to this, the only thing we're changing is the drive that allows us to get to the garage doors at the back of the building. That would be the main access into the lower area. There's also a second garage door here that's just for equipment that will be used either for maintenance of the property or just used occasionally. We have taken and for stonewall, we've got a previous surface of a building here. We've used a previous surface area by 5,555 square feet. So we have taken this addition, the building addition, and the, that's the building addition and this extra pavement. So we've taken this portion of the building and infiltrated it into a series of cul-de-sacs chambers and calculated through the 100-year storm so that we are not increasing the rate or the volume of runoff that go out of the site. This area that we see in the lichen is existing lawn. There's a tree line to the side on the east side of the property. There is a fence along this side of the property on the southerly side. There is a fence along this side. One of the things that we are proposing is to plant six additional trees on this side of the property. As far as lighting goes, there are some additional existing lighting within the parking and lawn building. In the design, building design, they do, they asked that perhaps additional lighting be provided in the parking lot. They're going to have four lights in the parking lot here. There'll be, there's a light already in the pole here. We're going to put one in the entrance as it follows dark sky and facing away from people, both pointing down so that it's not shining anyways. The windows are covered. There will be additional lighting in the building in several locations on, above the garage doors, again, shutting down so that they can provide that to us. As far as parking goes, the parking, we're not changing the parking. The goal of this isn't to increase occupancy, it's to increase flow and functionality of the building. So the book, the parking area right now is spread toward 20 parking spaces. There's handicap access in the front, there's two places that we are not at this moment, but are acting as handicapped spaces over here, those will be striped and marked. During, during a funeral service or chapel service to the building, the parking configuration is different. It's staged onsite so that there are parking in the parking spaces or parking in, basically in a configuration that stacks everything so that it can be, at appropriate times. So we have basically the parties that are in the parking lot itself. Same in the back, the employees of the lawn taking back the carts up in this area here so that we have a runway in here, there's an exit, there's a... There's a service that the cars come in this way and they get stacked so that they're coming back up. They also, if it's necessary, expand onto the lawn as they have always. Compacted enough so that parking vehicles during the throw of the year is not an issue. And we've also stacked just for employees, there'll be, can have six cars in the basement and we put three in the, in the structure that goes down to the garage door. Erosion control, right now, we're proposing erosion control around the stockpile. The flow of the, flow of the site is going in this direction, so any stockpiles will have erosion control running around them. And I think that's basically the outline of what we wanted to show as far as the proposed addition goes.
Okay, thank you.
One unrelated announcement, the library's closing, so if anyone goes out that door, you can use the restrooms, but please do not open those doors, you will set the alarm off and we'll have a visit from the cops. So please just come out to this door and you can just exit through the glass doors.
I also just wanted to add a note that there's no dumpster on site, there are no dumpster on site.
We're going to get to questions.
Okay.
Get a fast Phil for his comments next.
So, my name is Phil Paradis with Beta Group. We've been asked to peer review this project. It sounds like there's been some updates to the plan relative to our comments. So, so we wanted to, we visited the site and we note there's a retaining wall on the south side. Was it? So, so just to let the planning board know, if they don't already, this is already under construction. And so they, so they've already demolished the building and they're in the process of laying the foundation, I think, for the rest of it.
Yeah.
So there's a retaining wall on that south side. We just want someone to look at it, make sure it's still safe and...
Yeah, it's a retaining wall, it's between one to two and a half feet high. It's, it doesn't appear to be going to cut it at this end here where it extends into the building and it will be poured into the existing, I mean, the proposed foundation.
And it does look like you've added the structures that were within 100 feet of the...
I did, I missed a question. So, one of the questions was could I add buildings that were within 100 feet of the property, which we did, is a shed, two sheds.
So now they're just, I'm assuming you...
One of the comments too was there was a shed, our existing shed looked to be closer and is closer than the required zone setback. That shed is not on a foundation, it can be moved to meet the appropriate requirements for site setback.
It's off my foot. There you go. And then, so, so I think, I'm trying to wrap my head around the parking issue because you're increasing, significantly increasing the overall size of your building.
I still expect relatively the same amount of people, we just haven't crammed in at this point. I have another funeral home in Hollis and a lot of our bigger services are about 150 people, which we can accommodate over there, about 60 parking spaces. And then we have on-street parking to go both locations. And this is just to, really for down the road, when it does get bigger. We started back in 76 and the population was about 6,000 people and now it's tripled just about. I would say things are getting, changing as people don't have religions, but it's easier to build now and start adding on again.
They're just arming that part of the library.
Instead of trying to add on again and again, just, it's almost exact same as this library, you know, back when this was started, same population. Now they've added on a large number of square footage and I think their capacity is almost the same as what this capacity is and we have more parking than here is. And we have an agreement if we need to, if the on-street parking wasn't working, I have an agreement with the church too. People could either walk from the church or we could shuttle them back and forth, the same as the library here.
So I think that there is a standard for the parking that we have to adhere to?
So there's no particular, this doesn't fall into a written requirement
Okay.
in your bylaw, but it does say that you find the closest one.
Okay.
And you try to match it. So, so the one that's closest is assembly, places of assembly, which require one space for every two seats. The applicant has provided enough parking for one for every three seats.
And I was able to find, Massachusetts doesn't have any requirements, but I found another state, another town with a bylaw specific to funeral homes. We figure three people per car by the time you figure limousines. Most people who come to a service are usually families of three or four. There's very few that come as single people. So just out of historic uses, we figured most three people per car. So I was saying, we don't quite fall into any of them. And even at times when we have big, big services, like seniors, a senior bus shows up with a dozen people. It's tough to pigeonhole us in any particular category, but at least two, three people is what we figure.
So I think, I think that needs to be maybe thought about for more. I mean, they do have plenty of area if they are in the parking grass.
We have plenty more, I could add another 20, 30 cars just parking, just staging the parking lot, it's not...
Actually, Madam Chair, do you have a point of clarification? Is, are the parking estimates based on the actual parking spots or based on the staging?
Based on the staging. So it's the staging where we're going to need it because everybody comes at once for the service at once?
Understood, so you have 28 full-time designated parking space?
And those would not, this is not, then the layout that we would do for the staging for a service doesn't follow those lines?
Understood, so how many cars can you accommodate in your parking area, not including the grass?
Eighty, eighty, not including the grass?
Not including the grass.
Include the garage or not?
Including the garage.
Include the garage?
So I have 83 spaces.
Yeah, but it's...
I have 83 spaces that include the grass and I would have to take a...
16 and 8.
24 of that is on, are on the grass.
The original, the original submission didn't have any on the grass?
It always, it's always shown on the grass.
Really?
Yeah.
So 59 spaces on the pavement?
Staged.
Staged.
Staged, staged.
Understood. And then, what's your occupancy?
We're going to be here for like 250, 240 or something like that. We're going to have five bathrooms, one for every 50, so. I mean, I could always cut the occupancy 150, but we, as I said, we'll be there for 250. We need to expand later parking if we pay less when we come to it.
Is there a way we could just require seeing, having a copy of the shared parking agreement with the church?
They don't, right, even the library doesn't have a written agreement with the church. I checked.
Because I, I don't want to pay more for the service than is needed and shared parking is ideal.
I say most of, I've never, never really had any people, they need to get them on the property or on the road. My issue is like when we, once we get this on, the line of people is into the building, the parking lot is open, the tenant's gone to a busy service of the place. When the line gets up the door, people will right by the entrance because they don't want to pull on the parking lot with the people there, but the parking lot's practically empty. So they all park on the street or around the corner or whatever. So getting the line into the building frees up the parking. We have big services, I usually have extra people to guide the cars and parking lots and whatever.
Matt?
Yes.
Questions? Are you expanding the number of, is it called chapels or rooms or...
No, just the room I have now, I can only fit about 50 people in. And then we have to start having people in the other rooms surrounding, which they can't really see too well. I mean, I can usually broadcast it through the speakers, but...
You have to kind of circulate through and...
It, it doesn't function well, I mean, it's okay, but this...
It sounds like it would improve.
Yeah, like Paulston, I put an addition on, father and I put an addition on 20 some odd years ago. We went from the same thing, we went from a capacity in a room of about 50 to we could put 150 in one room and 75 in another.
I have a statement through the chair and then a question. Statement is that the busiest of times people have parked in the grass is... Statement is that the busiest of times people have parked in the grass is very respectful and peaceful. Not, you know, it's not like a restaurant or something. It's serious.
Yeah, no donuts.
And my question is, the setback on the south side, is that, is 50.9?
It's a 10. It's a 10 foot required setback.
So it's more space than what is required?
Yes.
Thank you.
Phil, were you done?
No.
Yeah.
So the existing parking lot really doesn't conform to your current standards relative to landscaping in buffer zones and lighting? So, and it sounds like there's been some work relative to that? Some land, added landscaping?
We added some trees to buffer the more than the neighbor.
I mean, the... So they are gonna be seeing fairly sizable addition?
Well, there's a fence here and there's a fence here. We're just adding some trees there just for softening and to, at some point, add them.
Yeah, yes. They are gonna see a bigger building. So I think, just making sure it meets the standard relative to the number of trees. And I don't know if there's... Do you have interior parking space? And/or requesting a waiver for those things?
Yes.
Also, one of the major things is your driveway widths don't meet the current standards either. They look to vary from, I don't know, 12-ish to 16. So that would be more of an issue for our friend back here. But the standard is 24 feet. And so none of the driveways are 24 feet.
No, we were proposing to change what's existed.
Okay. Well, I think that'd be something that we wanna make sure that you're... If there's any improvement we can make relative to public safety, that'd be the number one thing. And you'd have to request a waiver for the size of your driveways. So you also like to see the utilities?
So the base units, I show they're under, there's two, between two and three base units. They're gonna be under the deck over here, the second story deck, the new screen. And if there are all of the utilities are interior to the building.
Okay. But you've got water and sewer, some services?
There's existing water and gas coming in this location here. There's an existing sewer line that comes to the back here. That line will be, obviously be connected to the building.
We just wanna show the site distance measurements. I don't think you get issued there, but just provide those in the plan. Sidewalk, requirement for to have a sidewalk along the frontage of your project. I know there's a sidewalk on the opposite side of Hayden Row, but not on this side. So I think, again, you have to ask a waiver from that later. Lighting plan, I think you gotta provide the details and photometrics for your proposing relative to lighting. And then we want to make sure that the chief is satisfied relative to access and/or hydrants. Mechanical equipment, you just asked solid waste, you've just answered already. We just, relative to stormwater, you're providing infiltration for the roof. I think there may be opportunity to provide low-impact development practices relative to the parking lot itself to increase the water quality as well as infiltration.
You're talking about things like grass wheels and such?
Say that again.
Are you talking about things like grass wheels?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're trying not to do any swirls adjacent to the parking lot because that's where they park cars. So it would be, we're trying not to change the grade and direct water to it. Right now it goes off into the grass and has nothing to issue. So to put grass wheel there, we talked about it. The problem is it would, it might stop parking at certain times of the season.
Okay. There may be an opportunity to put it on that north side where your pavement sheets off?
Put it uphill?
Uh, no.
Yeah, it's all, it's going, it's going this way.
Yeah, it's uphill.
It's, it sheath flows off into this area.
Axol lower and put the swing on?
It's already lower, it's already lower.
So what we would do is we would look at that.
Okay. I mean, so those are the things that we're looking for. Is there an opportunity on the south side?
Lower.
South side as well? You gonna repave the parking lot?
Not at this time, it'll soon down the road.
But I...
Yeah, so we'll pitch it.
When I looked at the pictures, it looks like it's possible over there. Yeah, relative to, and then erosion controls, we'd like to see it around the perimeter of your work area, not just the stockpile. And provide an operation and maintenance plan for your site. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Phil. John?
So we received comments from several other town organizations. Would you like me to read those out loud?
Sure, they're really brief, right?
I will read, yes, I will read. Really Board of Health because if the chief would like to, I can read yours or you can speak, bring up your comments as well. Or I can do it if you don't want to.
Oh, go ahead.
So from the Board of Health, there were four comments. And it's the funeral home and outbuilding a service with municipal water and sewer service. As such, while our septic installation is not a concern, the construction and demolition work must be completed in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations promulgated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Spessus lead dust and pest controls. Efforts should be taken to minimize nuisance conditions during the development process. And as stated in the stormwater report, any illicit discharges identified will be terminated and the proposed site uses will not generate, store, or discharge any pollutants to groundwater and/or wetland resource areas. And then Fire Chief said, "The observations that stand out are the front access, the reference to stack parking, and our ability to travel through to Holt Street. The engineer has commented that all access requirements are met below our code references and comments per 527 CMR-1, chapter 18, 2321. Fire department access road shall extend to within 50 feet of at least one exterior door that can be opened from the outside and that provides access to the interior of the building. Comment is fire department access roads are defined as having an obstructed width of not less than 20 feet, unobstructed vertical clearance of not less than 13 feet six inches, and surfaces designed and maintained to support the imposed loads of fire apparatus on an all-weather driving surface. Currently Hayden Row Street meets the qualifications of a fire department access road per 527 CMR-1, but the distance to the closest exterior door of 57 Hayden Row Street exceeds 50 feet. Additional comments are a sweat path analysis of the existing U-shaped driveway will assist us in assessing if our vehicles will be able to exit Hayden Row Street during an emergency for the safety of our responders as well as passing traffic. Also, the proposed stacked parking solution would not allow emergency apparatus access to either side or rear of the structure. It would also eliminate our secondary means of access from Holt Street. These factors will increase risk for all involved parties during an emergency event." And no other comments from DBW.
Comments from you?
Nothing that doesn't echo what these comments have already been said.
Is the stack parking new?
No, we usually, we've been doing it for a long time. We don't usually fill it up like we did. We just wanted to show we would be able to fit all cars on the property. But usually have a couple of rows with the center aisle going down. Kind of a standard in the business we're supposed to do.
We just have to make sure we have emergency access.
We just wanted to show we could fit that many cars on the property.
So two comments together, the access, this is Holt up here, right? That driveway that you didn't wanna touch might have to look at for, to meet the bylaws and also for safety access.
We will take a, we will take a look at that.
Chief, what is the typical approach to a stacked parking arrangement like this?
I haven't dealt with a stacked parking arrangement before. So I typically have a, the design shows what the access is. And I think the only, I spoke with the chief today. I gotta get together with my fire engineer. We're in the building, it's like I was scheduled for next Monday.
Oh, good.
And we're evaluating the uniquenesses. It's a partially sprinkled building. So I kind of look through 527 and try to determine length of access. As they're trying to work me through those line stretches and things like that. And if it's close enough, and there's a few pieces that I had basically before. And I have to have our fire engineer, third party reviewer, kind of walk me through that part of it. So I'm not quite ready to explain the whole access answer right now.
Right. So is there any plans to make it more completely sprinkled?
The whole new addition's gonna be sprinkled. The, where the butts on the new addition will have a curtain on the inside of the old. But trying to pull all the trim down and go through the whole building would probably be a few hundred thousand dollars to do the old building.
So I presume it's also, it's not, it's also access if, you know, somebody at the service is in trouble. It's not just a fire event, right? So what do you do in that case?
We pretty much always maintain access for anything to get in or out. Because we have a lot of times, we've had ambulances show up before. We have police for escorts and stuff. Most of the cars, we have keys in if we had to move something really quick. So we're prepared for most of that.
Do they leave keys in the car?
We take them, they do.
Maybe that could be a piece of the answer is to make sure that they just stay in the cars? Because you have people outside.
As long as they don't have a little fob in their pocket, they'll walk away. But most of the time, we get them. That way, trying to back them in and put them where we want is easier for us to just do it than trying to tell people how to do it. So we basically validate most of the cars.
All right. So at this point, we usually go around to the planning board members and the public asking for comments or if there are additions to the detailed outline that people would like to make. So I'll start with you, Deb.
I'm a little concerned about the AC units being, creating noise to the neighbors.
So Deb, that is on, we can, we'll get to, that is on the outline? Yep, no, no, we're just adding items if...
Oh, adding?
Yeah, if they're, if they're not here. And then we'll walk through them all. No, that's okay.
Which page is the...
Thirty-three?
In the details, I'm gonna put the line on there. Okay, I think I'm good.
Amy?
I have nothing to add.
Frank?
If we do not have solar, I'd like to discuss that.
It's on there.
Okay, thank you.
No additions. Dave?
We're good.
Anybody from the public here to speak on this? Yeah, go ahead.
I have some questions, nothing to add.
Nothing to add. So what we're doing is adding to the outline right now, but we welcome the questions at the top. Okay.
Just, is sidewalks on there? I would think, right?
Sidewalks are here.
I can't remember the list.
Five for 1.8.
Was that 35 of the packet? Thirty-three of the...
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm working with the paper copy.
Thank goodness. Okay. So do you have a specific question or comment on the project in general from the public? Mary, you had said.
Yeah, Mary, I'm not too intrusive. Some quick things, what about significant snowstorms and where does the snow pile when they plow? Because that might impact the parking area. And I don't know if that is a consideration.
I've always pushed it probably 75 feet off of the parking lot.
Snow removal is on here, on the outline, yeah.
And then it's a two-story building?
Basement and main floor.
Okay, so there's not...
There's not a second story.
For offices or anything like that?
The roof is gonna be the same style as what's on the building now at Camaro?
May I ask?
I think you addressed your seminar about maybe screening for the neighbors and stuff.
Let me just make sure that that's there. Although I don't, are there any neighbors here?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any general comments at first?
No, well, yes, just one, Bruce Preswell's, he lives in 6 Holt Street. I'm the inheritor on the east side. And I just wanna state that I support the project. And all the time, the chairman's been there, almost 40 years. We've not had a problem. We're in the services that have taken place there.
Okay.
Just a little run up? No?
So a quick question to the chair?
Yes.
So that shed is on both of your properties or that?
No, the green...
The property line is dotted on?
The property line isn't here.
And the green is the tree cover?
The green is just my color line. It's, yeah. It's a little red, it means it's...
The motor mark is wrong.
To the chair, I just have a quick process question. Are the notices that go out to the butters, are those addressed to the address or to the person?
The owner illegal.
Yeah, the owner illegal. And the only reason I ask is that the, I know the owners that are listed on the drawing at 59 Hayden Row, they haven't owned that property, I think, in seven years. So just wanted to make sure that the right butters are notified.
So the butters list is taken from the assessor's records, which should be more current. This, I don't know where they get this information, but the NF is now our formally.
Okay.
I guess, I guess that's off the town website, so some, a couple of...
Just to put the properties on here? Okay.
So one other quick comment on that?
Sure.
I know we'll get the sidewalks on the list. But I know for some time Holt Street has, residents have been asking for sidewalks. I was just wondering if you guys would be willing to think about putting a sidewalk along that area of your property?
I would consider it.
Yeah.
There's a fire hydrant on that side, which could be, could be done.
May I add comments to that? I believe the sidewalk is on the opposite side of the street. It's proposed when it was up for...
Oh, when it was proposed, yeah.
I mean, at this point, where it's just to have all this stretch right in front of our property where it doesn't connect to anything, we just wouldn't certainly let it be parked at all.
Because usually if it's a real big service, the cars drive up on the curb on that side. So you park along the road there.
We feel bad about everyone who's a sidewalk holder.
There's a few neighbors who throw some really good parties down there and do the same thing.
Yeah, we will definitely talk about sidewalks. Okay, so in just the interest of time, we can... So to be honest, I think that there are a lot of issues to deal with with the parking lot with the comments from Beta and the concerns that the Fire Chief had. And the very first, the very first notice to, the agenda item is vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow and truck traffic flow. So I think that it makes sense to continue this public hearing and give you a chance to more fully speak to Beta's concerns, which will be our concerns, and the Fire Chief's concerns, which will be our concerns. And when would be the next time for them to come back?
So starting at 7:30 on the 23rd. It looks like we have something scheduled for every half hour increment. So that's, well, I take that back. Whisker was decided, so we actually have an opening for whisker day. Continue it to the 23rd.
So September 23rd or October 7th, which makes better sense?
We'd love to do the 23rd only because we're just trying to keep this, we'd like to keep going with the project if possible.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to September 23rd. It's gonna be starting at 7:30.
We sort of go through everybody to try and get everything resolved before any...
Yes. So you're gonna have to really work the issues... Yes, so you're gonna have to really work the issues and get it resolved by the Tuesday before the twenty-third. Those are the deadlines for supplemental for new plans. Does that still sound like an achievable?
So if we can't, then we will request a continuance, that same day, that Tuesday.
Okay. Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded?
Discussion?
No, it hasn't been moved and seconded.
Has it been moved? Yeah, thank you.
No, he just wasn't there.
It's so moved. Okay, now it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Discussion, please. I'm kind of okay with what we've seen. I think emergency access with the road driveway, it's not a road, it's driveway, it's pre-existing, if there is an emergency, people could easily drive on the lawn to bring the big trucks in. I know the big trucks have been in the circle in front, okay, they fit okay there. I don't see, I don't see an urgent need to update the parking lot based on the expansion of the building, it's not, it is a big expansion space-wise, but it's not overwhelmingly.
It's not used every single day, it's very seldom.
So I'd be kind of okay with approving what we have unless the chief specifically disagrees.
How about you, how about you look to your planning board members and see if anybody is following?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I disagree, because I think there's still some outstanding issues from the fire chief and from Beta that need to be addressed, and just to be consistent with our process, to ignore those and move forward, some kind of approval doesn't, wouldn't make sense to me.
I'm on the same page.
No, I agree, I agree. Just, we need to go through our agenda at least, and have these discussions.
Sure, sure, sure. Sorry, one more point of discussion.
Yes.
Through the chair, it'd be great to see some elevations for this, too.
You mean to see what the building was then?
Yes.
Yes.
We could include that for next time.
The architectural plan was?
Architectural.
Was included, but it was, it was something that you had to down with separately, it wasn't included in our plan.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, it's like, the six hundred and eleven pages plus the plan, okay? And the other plans.
The elevations.
I just, I can't remember, was that approved by the design review board, or?
We saw it, it didn't review, yeah.
Were there sections, site plan sections as well? Did I miss those?
There were.
And did you require them for, because what I'm trying to figure out is that flow, and it'd be nice to see how the lot.
So the elevations, there are contour lines on the plan to, how the parking lot, see that passing.
Yeah, this is regular, it's.
Yep, see, those are the contour lines, I did each, maybe you see the other color.
And so they haven't changed at all?
Yep, so that's the existing, I do, and then next one would be for.
Elevations are really nice, if anyone has a chance to open them, they're very special property.
So we're just continuing, we're just brought in on continuing right now?
We are, I'm just making sure that she's not gonna have something else to ask them for. You good?
I'm good, yeah.
All right, so all those in favor of continuing to September twenty-third?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Any abstentions? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, we are now to the continued public hearing, oh, remember to go up this way. Continued public hearing for the LNG line replacement and the new public hearing for Cross Street, Scenic Road, both are ever source.
Do you, through the chair, would you like to build a state forever source?
If you don't need to, you don't need to. I've got, I mean, are you?
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Yeah, we'll see. Do we have an outline? I'm sorry.
Is there number seven?
Yep.
LNG is page fifteen of the memo.
Yep. It's nineteen, oh wait.
Seventeen of the PDF.
Okay, there we go. All right, here we go.
Does the applicant have a preference on which one we start with?
All right. Does the board care?
Do you wanna get the scenic road done first? Seems like lower hanging fruit.
I'm okay with that. So, the scenic road, is it?
Yeah, but then you have to find a different place in your mind.
My paper page twenty-five.
Okay, paper page twenty-five. At twenty-seven on the PDF, okay.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourselves and the scenic road application.
My name is Richard Pottet, I'm with SWCA Environmental Consultants, I'm here tonight on behalf of EverSource Energy.
John Bertham, project engineer with EverSource Energy. We can give a quick update of why, so EverSource has an existing pipeline, which you may be aware that crosses Cross Street in Hopkinton, which is a scenic road, so we have the project before you, we're working on the replacement of the existing steel pipe that is within that line, so that's why the scenic road permit is before you.
Is that the only scenic road that the pipeline crosses?
In Hopkinton, correct.
In Hopkinton? Doesn't go across Wilson?
It does not.
So tell us what you need.
So there is an existing stone wall that I believe on the western portion?
Yes, so the, so, so right now EverSource has a twenty-foot, the easement width transitions from a thirty-foot wide easement to a twenty-foot wide easement as it crosses Cross Street, this doesn't mean it exceeded road. Within the road right away, it's a perpendicular crossing, obviously, where the existing line goes across the road now, the proposal would be to retire the six-inch line in place and install the replacement line within the same easement across Cross Street. With regards to the scenic road criteria, really, we're talking about an existing easement that is relatively unvegetated across the road. The west side, there, you can, it's a pretty open core, or on the east side, there's more shrub, inarbitrations vegetation with trees along the ridge, but we did do a tree survey along the whole route, and nothing came up over three-inch diameter breast height within the actual easement width within the road core or road right away. There is a portion of a stone wall that extends into the easement by about, say about five feet or so. With the construction of the project, the plan is to use the entire easement width to construct the replacement pipeline, so that wall will be temporarily moved, the stones will be moved, and then have full documentation of the way it looks, and then return that to a pre-construction condition, back in the same location, and the construction is complete. The easement itself, it's a pipeline easement, they're traditionally for maintenance, it's kept in a non-forested condition, so at the completion of construction, the ground surface would be returned to pre-construction grade, it would be seed, mulch, put down to restore, and vegetation, non-forested vegetation would be allowed to grow back within the easement, basically to the condition that it is now.
John?
So we had some comments, so first off, no comments from DPW. We did have some comments from town council, four comments specifically. The applicant addressed these in a letter that I sent over today, we received it Friday afternoon, and that, I think we have the cover letter, did we print out the cover letter for you guys as well?
Yep.
So that's the cover letter. They also included archaeological survey, but it was confidential, so I was wary of sending it out to the board, but I can send it out later, I just didn't know if you'd be able to handle that.
Typically, it's fine, I think, through the board, but we just didn't post it on the internet or anything like that.
So I can send it out to the board if you'd like to look, but the conclusion was that no archaeological or historic resources were really found in the area.
Okay, I'm not sure we can, we can split that here, either comes to us or it doesn't, right?
Yeah, it's, I would have to talk to town council.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that there's a mechanism for doing that within open meeting law, for us to see something and not, not let the public see it.
I mean, it's, I'd have to talk to the archaeologist that did the report, it was, they put, privileged confidential info, because there are sensitive sites in the general area that are discussed in the report.
Yeah, we've heard this before, they don't really want people tromping out there on sensitive sites just for curiosity factors, so we've actually heard that before, and there's some mechanism for a review of the plan, and I don't remember how we did it. We'll have to, we'll have to figure that out, but it's not something we can send out to us as a board and not then make it public.
Right, okay. What I can say is that the, so the way the archaeological survey and the program is done is archaeologists, archaeologists reviewed the whole line, they identified based on certain, certain conditions, areas that they would consider more sensitive, and then they went to Mass Historical Commission, as well as tribal consultations, and ultimately through the Army Corps process, which is a section one of six of the Natural Historic Preservation Act, there was a request to do a detailed phase, they call it a Phase One D survey, which is actually shovel testing in these sensitive areas, so that's what was done. The actual Cross Street location is not in a, in a sensitive area that was identified, so I can tell you that right off the bat.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Was the survey done for the entire easement within Hopkinton?
Yeah, they do a walkthrough of the entire project here, and then they exclude a bunch of areas that just are not considered, you know, viable, because having potentially, some potential sensitivity for archaeological, historical resources, they do a first cut, and then what they were left over with was, with this Phase One B survey.
And were, were there any sites within the easement in Hopkinton identified, you know, where the construction would be done? Were there any sites not necessarily related to the scenic road one?
Yeah, I believe, I don't have the exact location in my head, but I believe they did look at an area to the west of, on the Liberty Mutual property, to the west of that large wedding complex, west of Cross Street.
So there may, there may be a site within the easement that will need to address in the other, any other decisions?
Well, I can't say, they looked at the areas, nothing came up as far as any, they didn't find any artifacts or anything that would, you know, make them think that this is.
Stone formations or anything like that, okay.
For a study, right.
And mentioned those results were shared with Mass Historical Society, as well as the local tribes and Army Corps engineers.
Yeah, we're just waiting for them to respond back.
When was, when was that shared?
It's been about a month and a half, maybe two, usually they come back in thirty days, but we haven't received their response back from, from FHC on that. And I will say that we had during our, we had consultations with the Mass Historical Commission early on in the project, we filed a project notification form, and through the process, they came back and basically said they had no issues with the easement, because we were working within an existing, previously disturbed construction easement. The need or the request for this additional survey work, which the reporter provided to, came through our consultation with the Native American tribes that are in the cover of this particular area.
And they have not responded to your request for comment, or did you only send it to Mass Historical?
We sent it to Mass Historical and the applicable tribes, yeah.
And no one?
We haven't received any response back, and that's not unheard of, I guess, you know, to not get comments back, but we do suspect, we do expect to receive some acknowledgement from Mass Historical Commission.
Do you have a process in place for protecting sensitive sites if you come upon them?
There, so there's, there's a couple things, it depends on what, what you might be talking about, so typically have an unanticipated discovery plan that's in place, so if you're in an area previously undocumented, you know, if you find something, then there's a plan that can be followed to, you know, to document that. And as far as, again, the construction easement itself, because of the fact that it's been disturbed in the past with regards to excavation and construction of the line, that's when determination came, that it was required for their assessment from the HCC.
Do we usually have the tree warden on the tree issue?
So the tree warden is John Westman, he provided no comment, he said he provided no, saying he had no comments, so usually I think he has no issue.
So I just note that the town council says that, does anybody have any concerns about the trees? The town council has a concern from the pictures.
I think we need to decide, someone from our side to tree warden, maybe he's made no comments because he's on vacation, or he specifically said no comments because the trees are the right size.
He said he will say no comment prior to leaving for vacation.
Yes, I would like the opinion of a tree warden.
So do we have, we don't have the, you did the survey, you said, of the trees, you have the measurements of the trees?
Yeah, we did, yes.
Did you provide that? I don't remember seeing that.
No, we did not provide.
Who did your, who did that? You did?
I didn't do it personally, but one of my staff did it for me.
It is hard to see in the photographs, they're kind of greening.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were a few trees, there's that, the white birch, it's a birch, and it's a very light, that's a nice nine-inch, twelve-inch, so it's just not clear where that easement is from the photograph.
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to.
I just wanna know what breast height is.
What's that?
Four feet.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm just saying, it's possible, it's different, you know?
Gary's is different than mine.
Saying, it's possible. So it's four feet?
Four point five feet.
Four point five feet. I think you should have paid those, I'm just saying. I know that's not, I know that's not our, it's not our fish to fry, I get it, our circus, not our monkeys, but seriously.
It would be nice to note on the plan where the photographs are, although it shows north, south, east, west, it would be nice to, sheet number, I don't know.
Well, I have a comment in line with that.
Yeah, on the pale drawing, has yellow line of color to show exactly where those pictures are coming from the barrows, and then the size of the palewood tree.
Maybe it's closer, somewhere on that.
And then the size of the caliper tree, maybe it's closer, somewhere on that draw.
Okay, so, I just wanted to make sure.
Forty-six.
I have it straight. So we, we did, when we did our survey, our, our biologist had, he had GPS, you know, the easement boundaries. And so he walked the boundaries and identified anything above three inches diameter, breast height in that. He didn't identify anything within the easement at, at the Cross Street location. So, so the tree that you're probably looking at is probably outside.
It's just really hard for us to tell from the pictures.
I understand.
Could you walk us through the pictures? I mean, that might be...
Well, technically, they're supposed to provide a plan with the trees that are going to be affected, no matter what size of markings. And then the stone wall, that will be affected, removed, or replaced. And that's part of our bylaw, so I, I don't know if you're familiar with that.
But, but there aren't any trees that are over three inches in caliber, which are the ones that have to be documented?
Then a map showing the same thing, that it says, this is what it is, this is what we see, and then we verify and move forward.
If the stone wall is shown, the, the little piece of the stone wall that comes into the easement from the south is on the, the drawing, you know, right? But, but just...
I just can't tell, I can't tell where is the easement, I can see a stone wall, but I can't see the context.
To me, that looks like the stone wall is completely in the easement.
Sorry.
So I don't know where your easement starts and ends.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's...
There are trees, but maybe they're out of the right way, I don't know.
Yeah, I think this, I had taken this photo looking towards the south, southwest to show the wall. So, yeah, it's hard to tell, I, I agree. Can you just slide over to them? Yeah, so this is standing, so the stone wall comes into the easement here, so this is on the west side of Cross Street. There's a gate there, the stone wall, so this is the south, that's the northern edge, and the northern tree line there. So the easement is, is right in that area there, and that's the stone wall that comes in.
Right in the stone wall, yeah. And those are not trees, those are posts of some kind?
Yeah, that's, that's a, a gate, I think that's, I think that's Liberty Mutual's gate, I don't, that's not your guy, ever source, put that up.
That was helpful to me.
Okay, so you definitely have to move the stone wall?
Yes.
You, you, you're comfortable taking more pictures and preserving the stones and replicating as closely as possible this, this stone wall?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Are you comfortable with a decision that says you can't cut down any trees within the easement that are greater than three inches?
Because you're saying there aren't any, right?
Right.
That's, well... Maybe there, I'm just trying to think if there's the...
Well, they haven't applied to cut down trees, right?
Within the...
Only applied to the stone wall.
Because, well, we're going to view, you know, the...
Right, but I want to be explicit about it, since there's a question about the trees.
There are other locations where there are some trees that have grown up in the easement that are, that we have identified large, not at, not at Cross Street, but...
So, yes, I am, I, I, in this case, I am specifically talking about your scenic road application, so it would not apply to other trees elsewhere in your, your pipeline project, just in the scenic road decision.
I guess it's, it's, yeah, that, that's fine.
Now, that only applies to standing trees, correct? Nothing that's falling from winter storms that needs to be cut off or anything like that?
So, no, right, so it applies to standing trees within the, the right of way, the town right of way that are greater than three inches in diameter, three inches or greater, that apparently are measured at the four point five foot line.
So we could include that as part of the approval?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be explicit about that, so if you get out there and somebody has made a mistake, you'll know that you can't cut down that tree without coming back and asking us.
Right, that, that's me, I will tell.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, um, but there is one thing, I think that we've had people that were removing stone walls to actually send pictures of the before to...
Yeah, the before and after.
Yeah, to jump, and, and then, of course, afterwards too, yeah.
Point of clarification, are there two separate aspects of this, and we're considering right now the right of way versus the approving whatever our role is in the overall project, or is it just the one right of way?
I'm not trying to understand...
I know, we're just doing the scenic road application.
It's just the scenic road, unfortunately.
We'll do this, do a public hearing for the scenic road.
But otherwise, they're still, they came before us, was that disinformational? We're talking about the right of way goes through Liberty Mutual property, or does not Liberty Mutual?
No, that's the whole continued public hearing for the whole pipeline replacement.
So two parts?
Yeah. All right, um, all right, so... The decision criteria for scenic roads, the degree to which the proposed work would adversely affect the scenic and aesthetic values upon which the scenic road designation was originally based. So if the stone wall is protected in the before and after, and utilizing the staff to ensure that the work is done appropriately, and no trees are removed in the right of way of the road within that section of your easement that are of, of three inches or greater caliber width at the four point five foot mark. All right, so you don't take down any trees unless you, you come back if you find one. The necessity for the proposed work in terms of public safety, welfare, or convenience. I don't think that public safety, welfare, or convenience really play here. The compensatory action proposed, which has replacement of trees or walls, so you will replace the wall as we discussed in its sort of disheveled state. And if you come back, if you have to remove trees that qualify, we'd have to talk about replacement of trees. Availability of reasonable alternatives to the proposed work which could reduce or eliminate anticipated damage to trees or stone walls. There was a question about whether or not you had to even touch the stone wall, are you sure you have to?
Yes.
Yeah, we feel pretty confident that we're going to be all the width of bars, just to use the work.
I mean, there's also a narrower easement there than elsewhere, because it's only twenty-four years, it's a little bit shorter.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, the trench, the trench that is excavated is only going to be, you know, say eighteen inches to twenty-four inches wide, but for construction vehicles and fabricating, like, they're going to be doubled.
Okay. Whether the proposed work would compromise or harm other environmental or historic values, and the consistency of the proposed work with previously adopted town plans and policies. So that's our decision criteria. So, um, I, are there any further comments or questions on this? Mary?
Mary, I'm not, I'm not too slow, pretty quickly. On the stone wall, in the event that those are significant to Indian tribes, are you going to preserve those stones? And do you have some place that you'll take them off-site and then use those to reconstruct the wall so that there's no damage to them, because they could have significance to the Indian tribes? In other words, if you just put another stone wall up here, but use other stones, it, it does impact it, so...
No, I think the, the plan would be to use the stones from the...
Yeah, we do require that people preserve the, the stones. I think that we, we satisfied ourselves that there's no historic or culturally significant sites in the, this, for this small piece, right? So we do ask you to keep the stones, and that's why you take pictures and try to track them, and try to get them back in the same, as close to the same fashion as you can.
Yeah.
Now, last question, do they put the stone wall work as being done so that you're, you're ensuring that they're going to be preserved?
Um, I think to the greatest extent possible, we would try to keep them off to the side of the easement and not bring them somewhere else where they could get misplaced or, or lost, if you will, so I think the intent would be to put them off to the side.
And then with respect to the trees, because this is a scenic area, I know that the requirement we met that there's nothing greater than three inches perhaps, but do you know approximately how many trees that are three inches or less could be impacted by this? Because if it's scenic and there's, you know, a hundred of those trees that all of a sudden are just gone, how that might happen?
We only, we only have jurisdiction over the ones that have, are three inches or greater at caliber.
And my question is just to understand what, what it's going to look like afterwards? Are most of the trees three inches or less, and so those are probably gone, or...
It's a very small amount.
The, the way I look at it is, so when you, when you move up Cross Street, if you, if you're coming up, you know, up the road, the easement is relatively narrow, so right now, it's pretty brushy in there.
So you don't know how many trees will be...
No, I don't know.
I think, I think I heard you say intentionally deforested along the length of it anyway, so it wouldn't have been a heavily treed section, yeah.
Yeah, most of the plants that are there are shrubs, shrubs, they're not, they're not, when they're living by the side of the tree. The west side of our region on Cross Street is actually relatively clear, there's not much growth there at all. The east side does have some, some shrub, the project will be, the hole will be mowed or cleaned up. There's some fallen trees, specifically around the easement.
I don't think that'll be shown in addition, if you're doing a thousand acres. And then finally, it might be applied to this application, and also the other one. I understand that there are some issues with where this pipeline connects with Ashland, right? Because it's coming through Ashland to Hopkinton?
It's, it's, it starts in Hopkinton, goes to Ashland.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I apologize, I don't have the article, but I read that there were a number of issues in Ashland that still have to be addressed before this connection before, is that correct?
So we are actively going through the permanent process in Ashland, and we're trying to address certain concerns. But at this time, I wouldn't say that anything that is going on in Ashland would prevent anything.
Not far from the article, but I don't think we...
We, we only have jurisdiction within Hopkinton, but I appreciate the point.
We're also just talking about the scenic road, right now.
But to be fair, it is part, partial of the whole, and one thing does affect another. But our question is right now is, I, to your point about the bushes, yes, on that side of the street, you can't even see down, hardly see where the water is, it's very thick, it's bushes, as opposed to trees on that side, which is the western side.
Through the chair, can I move the question?
You can.
Can I move the question?
Can you move the, the, make the, make the, make the motion to approve the scenic road application?
With the conditions that you mentioned.
With the conditions asked, is there a second?
Question, what were the, the one condition, no removal of trees?
That are over, and also taking plenty of pictures so that the stones are removed, protected, and replaced, and verified by county staff that they have been replaced as close as possible.
Replaced with the existing rocks, okay, got it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion?
There's no discussion, I'm moving the question.
Let's move.
You need to both move it.
Discussion in general.
Oh, you're moving, you're moving the, you're moving the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see.
Discussion, go.
On this factor, my concern is public safety. And that's one of our conditions of our bylaw. And the reason that you guys are needing to move the stones and possibly deal with some trees is the fact that you have a construction project, so when I say it's part, partial of the whole. We represent the planning board of the town, and we have several issues with your company. Some of them are safety issues, and the Department has power over those. Some of them are issues in the town that are concerned with planning. We've been asking for, on the electric side, utility pole replacements that haven't been done. We hear you want to move ahead with this project, not because it's a, a safety issue on your side, but because you want to increase the amount of gas you can move through town to make more money, make with more customers on the other side of, of, of the pipe. But I haven't heard that the pipe that's existing, which is six inches, has any issues with it. That being the case, would there be no issues with it? And other concerns that the town is facing, we've asked time after time after time for utility poles. I know it's on the other side of the company, it's electric, but we're asking you, we've asked historically as people who've come before us from EverSource to come back to your EverSource and say, "Hopkinton needs this, Hopkinton needs, you know, the utility poles." There's other issues that are being addressed, but utility poles haven't been addressed. And I've been on this board five years now, six is my sixth year, and I haven't seen much progress at all. Zero progress, but all on utility poles. So as, one of the components of having scenic roadway bylaw is that we can rely on the safety issue. So safety issue right now is, the work that you're going to be doing in order to have the scenic roadway bylaw request made is, I don't think, a safety factor at all. I think they should keep the pipe that you have now until you deal with other issues that our town has. And for example, in the year 2018, there were fifty-seven gas leaks reported in Hopkinton. Nine were repaired. Are you guys aware of the number for this year? Or half of the year? It's probably the same ratio. In the year 2018, in the town of Ashland, there were forty-six leaks reported, eight were repaired. And I know these leaks are various types, but there's a site called Lost Leaks, which is run from MIT that reports on these issues, that your own recording numbers are inaccurate often. And their watch, watch organization, and I'm going to rely on their numbers from MIT, and point you to heatmat, heatma.org, which I do every time you guys move before us, and ask that if you could come and report to us how many serious leaks are in the town of Hopkinton in the year 2019. We know that there's at least thirty-five that were not repaired from last year. I don't know the extent of them, but just that number is pretty large. And if you're not going to repair those leaks, how can we rely on you to replace a six-inch pipe? And make it fifteen inches, twenty?
Twelve.
Twelve, sorry, my handwriting is messy. August first, in Kentucky, a thirty-inch gas pipe exploded, killing one person, didn't injure any many. I'm bringing up safety factors here. That's a thirty-inch pipe. A twelve-inch pipe would be less dangerous, I'm assuming, but twice as dangerous as a six-inch pipe that has, currently has no problems. So, um, last year in the state, a different company than yours, a gas company, had issues that were catastrophic. And because their repairs weren't being addressed. This is a serious issue in our state, a serious issue in our town especially. I will vote no every time, so you guys repair what you need to repair in our towns before I, I vote yes on anything you do. I wish my fellow board members to consider these facts. Consider the scenic roadway bylaw is written to protect our town, and more ways than just looking at a pretty road, it's also a safety issue.
Okay, thank you. I wonder if my fellow board members would consider an additional condition. I, I would like that, I, I remember when we had the solar project, the, the sensitive report from the ma, from, of the archaeological survey was sent to our Historic District Commission, is that correct?
Historic, Historic Society Commission.
Thank you, Historical Commission. For them to safeguard and review.
Do you want me to amend it as a condition?
Yeah, is that...
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I understand the sensitivity of it, if they can't send it because it's sensitive.
I, so, I don't know the sensitivity of it either, but that's why we did, that other survey was sent to the historical...
And not sent us, right?
And not sent us.
Which is, they're also subject to open meeting law, so if sent to them, what are they...
So it, I think that, yes, I think that the information is ultimately public. It just means that they would, they would have an opportunity to review it with their expertise. And then the public would have to specifically access it through them, that wouldn't just be public enough.
Think we're okay with that, right? Think we're okay with that, right? So anybody, I mean, can I ask John to add that as a third condition?
Any problem sending it to our historical commission?
Uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, it's just, again, it's one of the, the way, my understanding of the, the way it's processed is, we, we submitted it to, to John in, in the, um, the package that we, we filed. Um, but normally, we just, uh, don't have it put on, like, the websites and things like that. So it's, it's certainly fine for you guys to look at the boards and anything like that.
So it sounds like they've already satisfied the requirement, we just need to ask John to forward it to the.
No, but I don't entirely, sorry, through the chair, I mean, I mean, I mean, to me, I haven't heard of any, of any reason why it's sensitive or need to be kept confidential. And, and so at the end of the day, if, if you want us to look at it, then the public has a right to look at it as well, unless you can justify what exactly is so sensitive about it that it can't be shared with the public. Because I, I can't make an opinion on it if, if I can't share that with, with constituents in Hopkinton.
Yeah, it's, it, the, the sensitivity tells me, just like I mentioned before, that, that it does describe, um, cultural resources in, in the general area, um, in, in somewhat detail, and has maps and stuff showing those locations, so.
But I'm struggling with why there's sensitivity around describing something that exists that's a historical. So, it's something through the chair. So, um, if you release that type of information to the public and people start going to those sites and digging up the resources for their own personal interest, those sites are compromised for the public good. So that's the reason it's usually kept confidential. I don't know if there's a way that your consultant can provide a public version of the study that somehow conforms to what the board is requesting and provides the information that's needed. I would say they probably have at some point in time, I can't imagine they do business just solely on a confidential basis.
Yeah, you know, we can.
And maybe that can satisfy that, or I can look into with town council about how this is usually handled, uh, and provide an answer to the board, and we can.
The chair was a mere solution, a good solution for us, I mean, why are we trying to make more of what it is?
I'm, I'm fine with it, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just, I, I think that it should, if, if it's to be considered, I think it should be disclosed, and if there's a good reason not to, then.
Yeah, I keep thinking back to the, the solar project, so they did an awful lot of work and they did this big survey, and the, the, um, the Native American expert that came before us, um, was pretty specific about exactly that. You don't really want to indiscriminately highlight, um, these sensitive areas, these culturally sensitive resources and so forth, so that the general public will excavate, you know, seek them out. Um, but we did, we do have a copy of it at the historical commission. So if you have a copy, we can just take care of that on our own.
I do have a copy.
And keep it with that, it, because it, it, I mean, we can't, we can't not, uh, make it, you know, public, but we can't control how it is, that it is, uh.
So just to keep us a little focused, noting the hour, so.
Yes.
You made a suggestion, it sounds like we have it covered.
We're there, thank you.
We'll go back to the two, we have a, a motion and a second.
Yeah, motion and a second, we have discussed, um, Frank, I appreciate your, um, your focus on the safety issues. I think that we are all of the same mind, I, I am not concerned, personally speaking for myself, about the scenic road application in this regard, um, and I'm prepared to vote yes, but I will, um, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nate?
Any abstent, abstentions? Okay, thank you. Um, so we are going to necessarily have to continue, that's one done, which is good. Necessarily have to continue the other public hearing, um, and when might we do that too?
September twenty-third, you have Wood Street Solar, uh, Buckland Leonard, Chesmore, tentatively, Legacy Farms restricted land, uh, Mr. President Special Amendment. We have not received an application for that, so it could take that space. Uh, and a presentation from Bruce Ezell for Cedar Street property. Looks like that fills out the meeting, so. Okay, and consequently, A and R, that may be coming.
All right, so, um, the twenty-third or the seventh, what's the board's?
Seventh.
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 Yeah, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, continue this public hearing to October seventh, the bylaw.
So moved.
Hold on, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
What, second, wait, hold on, what? So, I, I think before the public hearings were officially opened, we continued the rest of the others, I think we need to, is that right?
We did open them.
Yeah, we opened all of them.
We did open them all.
But we discussed what they say they're going to be continuing to before we opened it.
You have to close this, the public hearing for Cross Street, so.
Oh, entertaining, Marshall, close the public hearing for Cross Street.
So moved.
Thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Man, I'm nervous. All right, so I did, uh, we did continue one public hearing, um, before we hit officially open them. So just, um, revote the Abbott public hearing, Abbott Realty, okay?
Send, continue to add the, the other farms, three, two, after the three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
And how about the last one?
Last one, I was just saying you, to October seventh.
But did we officially do that?
Yes.
We did already?
Yeah.
Any others? Oh, we did, yes. Yes, we did all of that while you were off, and we had, I'm sorry, now, that makes sense to me, I'm like.
Yeah, there was, no, we didn't.
Yes.
Okay, so we officially withdrew.
We officially withdrew, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, no actions needed on the fourth?
No actions.
And, this is, you know, there's a lesson in here, don't do any business when Amy's out of the room. She will follow up, which we appreciate, you know? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.